That's much nicer in person. So, welcome to the Central School District Board Meeting. Comments from the community are entertained during the time designated under Communications Public Comments. I understand we do have some of those tonight. I think we have five. If you wish to speak to the board, please fill out a comment card. And we actually did this all online ahead of the meeting. Speaker comments in this form are limited to three minutes, but the board welcomes additional information and writing. Personnel laws prohibit the board from hearing public complaints about an individual in an open meeting. All complaints must go through the board's approved processes outlined in Board Policy KL. This form may be found at our website or by calling the district office. Typically, a speaker's comment is taken under advisement to allow time for the board to review an issue. However, the board chair or other board members may ask a speaker for additional information or may convey to the speaker some information that addresses their comment. Please note on the speaker card if you would like to receive follow-up communication, and if so, what avenues preferred. We can do that after each of the speakers tonight as well. So, thank you for attending. Thank you for those watching virtually. And let's go ahead and move into the review and adoption of the agenda.
So, we have one adjustment to the agenda tonight. We have added addition to the business agenda specifically to amend the Fuel Ed K-12, which the company is now titled Stride. So, when you see that in there, they have actually had a name shift or from their company to Stride in December. So, that is an addendum to the agenda.
Okay. And we will be adjourning to executive session tonight.
Short, very short.
Short, okay. Good, okay. Well, that brings us to the communication from the floor. So, I think here in the room, we'll let Emily orchestrate this.
Alright, so first, we have Tia.
Tia, are you there? There she is.
There we go, sorry. Okay, so, as many of you know, my name is Tia Lewis. Until last week, I had three kids enrolled in Central School District. Last week, I moved my third grader who's been suffering from anxiety and ADHD that's been brought on by the distance learning to private school in Salem. He's now getting to go full day in-person with other kids. He gets to have a real recess in PE every day. He's getting science, health, and social studies, which are subjects that he has not received from Central School District since last March. In just two days at his new school, I see a light in him that hasn't been there in a long time. And I want to see that in my other two kids, a kindergartner and a senior. I want our kids back in the classroom this year, and I know that it will look different, but we owe it to them to try. I watch every school board meeting. I've read Ready, School, Safe, Learners. I visit the CDC and American Academy of Pediatrics websites frequently. I know what the data says. I'm not an uneducated or selfish person. I'm speaking to you tonight because I care about kids and what we're doing to them isn't right. One of the quotes that I hear from these meetings quite often is that the virus makes the timeline. But that's from Tony Fauci. And his newest quote is, "It's less likely for a child to get infected in the school setting than if they were just in the community." He also backs the CDC's recommendations for opening schools using proper safety mitigations. Ready, School, Safe, Learners is the most comprehensive document in the entire country. We have everything we need to do this, and our metrics are advisory. So, we could do this safely. It's science. And so, when people say that by doing this, we're not following science, we actually are. I'll say that I'm more than a little frustrating at these meetings because I've been watching Dallas's school board meetings also, and they're much more action-oriented. They're not focusing on the why we can't open, but they're talking about buildings and how they're preparing to get kids in the classroom as soon as they can. I'm getting to feel really hopeless because the feeling in our meetings is that we're simply trying to find every little thing we can to make it impossible return this year. So, I'm curious to know if any of you have actually toured buildings with principals in each of our schools to see all of the hard work that they've done to prepare for our kids. And I've got some questions, and I hope that we can get some answers tonight. I feel like a lot of times, we ask questions and we don't get those answers. So, if you'd like to write them down, that might be helpful. I want to know if you guys have begun to ask teachers if they're willing to return back to the classroom like I'd urged in my email, with or without a vaccine. I also want to know what the plans are for seniors this year. How are we going to make their final year of high school memorable in a positive way? Because right now, they don't feel like they're being cared about. I know because my senior tells me and his friends tell me all the time. Also, since the metrics are advisory, and there's been little to no discussion about bringing back middle school and high school kids, does this mean that you have no plans to bring them back this year at all? Also, advanced-level math classes are a huge problem in the high school. My son has pre-calculus. He gets one hour of instruction each week and the same amount of homework as if he was attending classes normally. And I'm hearing this from every family I know with higher-level math. So, how do you plan on rectifying this? Because he is flailing, and he is not a flailing student. He's usually 3.8, 4.0. He's up there. So, this is not normal for him at all, at all. What is the plan for bringing back K through 5 for hybrid when we meet the metrics? Do we actually have a plan? Has there been any conversation about extending the school year? And my biggest concern is mental health. So, I've mentioned this many times in my emails. I experience the highs and lows with my son, and I'll tell you, we have more lows than feels comfortable for me as a parent right now. I mean, I'm constantly checking on him and stuff, but it scares me. I don't think he would do anything, but the reality is that nobody knows. So, I don't feel like as a district, we've done enough to address this. So, how will we identify these kids and then make them a priority for Lippi? Do you plan on having a way for allowing parents to let you know so that they can say, "Hey, my kid needs some extra help"? So, I look forward to hearing your answers. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Tia.
Thank you very much.
Tia, I had one question for you. This is Vidal. Are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. I saw that it was the Advantage School, I think, is what you...
Athletic Edge. Are you talking about Grady's private school?
Yes.
Okay.
Have you been able to see any other students there? Do you know if there's any other 13J kids that have moved there or...
I don't think so, but I have had other parents approach me for info so they could contact them. I found out about it through my cousin, and they just had a few spots available because prior to them doing this micro-private school, they had been offering a distance-learning camp. So, it was kind of like a daycare camp-type thing. But then they tried, they decided to switch directions and offer this private school. And so, I don't know how many spots, but it sounds like it filled up pretty quickly because they already had some kids from their other program move into this one.
Okay, I was just curious of that, but thank you.
Next, we have Melanie.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, there we go. Sorry, this is my first time speaking here. I've been meaning to do it sooner, but up until two weeks ago, we were among the students and families in Polk County that lacked high-speed internet access. So, this is my first time attempting this after all this time. I'm Melanie Ainsworth. I've got two kids in Central School District, a 10th grader and a 7th grader. They're actually fourth generation to go through central schools. Personally, I am the child of educators, my mom, my dad, and my stepmom. So, I grew up in a classroom. And I'm here tonight to tell you that for the vast majority of students, this distance education isn't working. My kids would likely be what you would be told were successes in distance education. My 10th grader has above a four-point right now. She's taking eight classes. But she's bored. She has minimal instructional time. I'm constantly trying to fill the void with additional activities for her. She has a fraction of her workload from last year as a freshman. You know, and my 7th grader, he actually has a bit more instructional time than her, but it's so much screen time that he gets frustrated. It's just too much for him. And both were very active in sports and other extracurriculars before, and so it has just been an enormous adjustment. So, while on paper, they look like they're doing well. My daughter worries whether she'll be ready for college. She doesn't feel like she's learning anything, and there's a high level of frustration. I understand why we closed down last spring. You know coronavirus, there's a reason it was called novel coronavirus. Nobody knew anything about it, and we were doing the best that we could with the facts at the time. Obviously, now we're almost a year into it. We know a lot more about it. Facts have changed. We have real-life examples of school districts like Miami Dade with 350,000 students who have managed to successfully stay open in hybrid models during, in a very high-spread area. We've got the CDC's own studies showing it can be done. Global leaders are emphasizing that schools should have been the last to close. And, you know, I'm telling you that even the kids that look like they're doing well, they're not. If you actually ask them, those kids that on paper are looking well are struggling too. And my daughter sees her classmates struggling. She knows from her Monday check-ins in PSP class that 60% of her classmates are failing, and that's not okay. And we're almost a year into this. Perhaps the American Academy of Pediatrician says it best when they do their stance, which is, "Since the beginning of the pandemic, new information has emerged to guide safety in schools." Opening schools generally does not significantly increase community-based for particularly when guidance outlined in the World Health Organization and CDC is followed. And that's different from what it was a year ago. We have new evidence, and so what I'm asking for you today is to, please, please continue to look at the new evidence. Look at the studies that are coming out. Look at what the professionals are saying. And please don't forget about the middle and high school students. It's been a huge adjustment, and I'm doing the best I can, but it's hard for my kids when they see teammates or classmates going to school, and they aren't. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Melanie.
Thank you, Melanie.
Is it my turn? I'm not quite sure. I'm sorry if I heard that. Are you ready for Heidi?
Yes, please.
Okay, sorry, thank you. Thanks for allowing me to comment. I have three children. Two are in the Central School District from kindergarten through 12th grade, and my youngest is now a 10th grader. I'm asking that you reopen schools to in-person learning. Trying to check my video here, sorry. There we go. Academics are severely lacking. There's no rigorous learning happening with distance learning, and I'm seriously concerned about the hole in my daughter's education. One key example is that Mondays, there's only one class, Panther Success Period, which is like homeroom. And any given day, this class is used for TikTok videos, the game cahoots, and breathing techniques. The fact that they used to be in school all day on Monday, and now they have about 20 minutes of check-in time to talk about TikTok videos is appalling. How can this count as a school day on our district calendar? Kids are getting enough social media on their own time. Monday should be a regular class day like any other day of the week. Each class is only two short sessions a week. The learning standards are so low right now, and the content of the material is so basic. They're not expected to complete their work, and not only are they getting short-changed by instruction time, but they're only getting classes on those four days a week with Mondays as a joke. Each class is, I'm sorry. I understand that having to operate this way was a quick fix for the pandemic, but it can't be a long-term solution. The current path that we're on really can't continue without serious detrimental impact to our kids. The school district's main priority should really be academics. It's the school's goal to not allow, or is it the school district's goal to not allow another kid to get sick again? Are you trying to keep schools closed indefinitely until there's no virus in the community at all? Like, to what end? The virus really has weakened over time, and it's not a serious threat to kids. We have a lot more information about it, and it's treatable. We can't continue to avoid teaching kids in the classroom because of one virus. Let the Oregon Health Authority provide information about the virus and let parents and families make their own health decisions while the school opens and operates in person. Over the 30 years that I've lived in Polk County, the school district has asked for bond money for building improvements, classroom necessities, and instructional materials. I've been a taxpayer in Polk County since 1989, and we have beautiful buildings that taxpayers have funded, and you're not letting the children benefit from the very things that you told taxpayers you needed in order to provide a good education. Our kids don't even have textbooks right now. They aren't able to learn in labs. Art, music, choir, band, shop, science, they all, all of these need in-person learning. And we've already funded the schools with everything the kids need, and yet they're vacant. I'm just asking that we stop being victims of fear and realize that COVID-19 is treatable, and the majority of people don't experience symptoms and get, and are not seriously ill. The survival rate's incredibly high. We have more information about it. Please use common sense and recognize that it's a minimal concern on our kids compared to the academic, social, athletic, and mental health needs of our kids. Viruses and illnesses have been in our society for thousands of years, and I really would like Central School District to stop trying to wipe out all the germs and get back to teaching kids. If some teachers are afraid of getting sick, they should remember that in every school year that they've worked, they've been exposed to germs, and it's not the school's job to keep germs out of the school. It's to teach kids. The high school recently changed D's to a P's, and that's a real disservice to our kids and the meaning of their diploma. It's time to stop taking these short-term solutions that could have just been last spring and implement a long-term solution that will really help our kids. The kids are suffering right now because of lack of academics and real teaching. Passing them along for two grade years now is really terrible. How will they be ready for college or a career when they're missing this huge piece of their education? It's a big hole. At a minimum, please start a hybrid model for teachers and families so that teachers or families who are afraid of the virus, let them continue to do remote learning, but please have in-person learning for the families who need it. Please work for the best interest of the majority of our kids and allow in-person school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Heidi. Thank you very much.
All right, next we have Shannon.
All right, next we have Shannon. Okay, I think I got it going. My name is Shannon Ball, and I'm a mother of two kids here at Central School District. One's at Monmouth Elementary School, and the other is at Talmage. And first off, I want to go a little different. I want to take the time just to give a couple shout-outs to the MES staff. First, I want to give a shout-out to the PE teacher, Mr. Palfrey, at Monmouth Elementary School. He's always thinking outside the box and trying to get the kids engaged in PE and getting them to move around. He's now offering after-school PE club once a week via Zoom, and my daughter is just super excited for how he's taking games kids love right now and creating the mental workouts. He has so much energy to try and get the kids engaged and get them moving and coming up with creative ideas. For example, he just came up with DJ Palfrey, and the kids just loved it. They really have just loved it. And I think this is especially important right now as there is little to no movement occurring with children doing distance learning and no sports. And so, I just really appreciate Mr. Palfrey and want to give him a shout-out to the school board to let him know what he is doing. And the second shout-out I wanted to give out to is the 4th grade teacher who my daughter has is Ms. Hirsch. She's always willing to take the extra time and create packets for my daughter as some aspects of fuel education were just not working. They were way harder than my daughter could do right now at this time, and she was always willing to work with my daughter since October. My daughter would not be excelling right now with fuel education if Ms. Hirsch did not take the extra time each week and create different packets for her. And so, I just want to really say thank you to all of the MES staff for always willing to go above and beyond during this time. And then now, I just want to go on to, on Friday evening, I was excited to receive the call that Central School District was starting limited in-person instruction for kindergarten K through 5, and then the seniors on February 16th, and then the junior high and others with the following week. I was hoping this evening, you could further explain who is considered, though, limited in-person. Several weeks ago, we received a call from the elementary school asking if they are interested in our kids attending school in person a couple days a week for two hours at a time, if we need transportation for our kids. Is that part of the limited in-person instruction that would begin on February 16th for the K through 5? If you can explain that further tonight, that would be great. And with first responders, nursing homes, and teachers receiving vaccinations, our positive numbers for COVID in Polk County are starting to fall. So, I'm hoping that as part of tonight's discussion for the school board, the board can clarify and explain Central's plan to get the kids in for hybrid learning if the parent chooses to have their child participate in hybrid. What is the timeframe after the numbers are met in which this plan will be executed? For example, is it one week, two weeks? Like, how soon will that happen after we meet the numbers? And I just want to follow up with ending by saying, I understand that hybrid will not be the same as school was two years ago as the district still has to meet the guidelines put out by Oregon Education. The kids will have to be in cohorts. They'll have to have 35 feet of space between them. They're going to have to wear masks, and they're going to have to have proper cleaning. And they won't be attending school every single day, and I get that. I just know that children are adaptable, and I'm extremely confident that our children will adapt to the necessary safety protocols that will be required in the hybrid model. So, let's give them the chance to show us that they can do it. If the district is struggling to meet some of those guidelines, I'd love to hear from you guys tonight about what those struggles are. This is a small community, and it's always amazed me how we can always come together to make something work. So, we, I think we'll be here for you if you guys will just let us know what you're struggling with. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Shannon. Is that it, Emily, or do we have one more? One more.
And Christine.
Okay. Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I've never done this before. So, I'm your local ER nurse here, okay? I work at Salem Hospital in the emergency room. I've been an ER nurse now for almost 14 years. And I wear a mask and goggles or a face shield every day. I'm in with dying patients with COVID constantly, okay? I have never caught COVID. Before I was vaccinated, never caught COVID. I am in their rooms with them hours and hours on end, holding their hands till they die, and I have not caught COVID because I'm wearing a mask and goggles or a face shield. I go to Lowe's, I go to WinCo, I go everywhere with a mask on, just like you all do, and I have not caught COVID. I want to know what is the difference between educators being in a classroom with students with masks on and their face shield, sitting in a classroom with adequate space in between them, and attending school? I want this information because as an essential employee, I feel like educators are the same. I don't feel like educators are any different than myself or a grocery clerk. I also feel like the fact that you guys have a union, you should be pushing for education for our children. I have currently two students at Central High School. I have three. My eldest daughter got the staff, you know, the short end of the stick last year, and graduated March with just a pass. That was it. So, that will forever be on her transcript. Thank God she already had been accepted to OSU, and she's currently a freshman there. I have currently a freshman in high school that he's experiencing his first year of high school online. He's a straight-A student, straight-A student. You can ask all of his teachers. Andrew Eames is a straight-A student, and currently, he's struggling. He's got depression like nobody's business. He's a three-to-four sport athlete. I want to know what is going on with OSAA and sports. Now that we have gyms that are allowing six people per 500 square feet indoors, I want to know what are we going to do about that? Because our kids need to get indoors and start practicing basketball. They need to start practicing more skills. The weather, if you think that it's healthy for them to be outside in the freezing cold in January that they're not going to get sick out there practicing, that's a joke. You have a safe gym, multiple of them, with plenty of square footage to allow small groups of six-plus in small groups in the 500 square feet that you have, wearing masks, and if they need to, face shields also, and doing their workouts inside, just like gyms are allowing. I think that central school parents deserve answers. They deserve a plan. There is going, there is going to be a rally tomorrow at the school at 3:00 PM. There's going to be parents, students, everybody out there. We want in-person school. I work full-time, 36 hours per week in the ER, taking care of patients. I'm taking care of you guys, your family members. I can't teach full-time too. I can't. I'm burning the candle at both ends of the stick. You guys have to understand, two days a week that I'm at work, my kids are home alone. Who's watching them and who's teaching them? Nobody, because the instruction from the teachers is so minimal. My freshman has school from 9:30 to 12:15 every day. That's it. 30-minute classes. That's it. Then I have a 3rd grader who's struggling. He needs an IEP now because he's, does not, can't put pen to paper because all they do is type. They don't check up on their students' work. It's very frustrating. I would like some answers, please, and I would like a plan. West Salem has a plan when they're going back. I think that being the fact that we're a much smaller school, that we should be able to provide that. I know that State and Elementary and Intermediate Schools have been back to in-person since October, and they're about the same size as we are. So, there's no reason we can't be back to in-person. And they're Marion County, not Polk County. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so that completes our community comments tonight. That will take us to our standing reports and recognition. First up is our, an update from our Central Education Association. Is Jessie able to join us now?
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Awesome.
Jessie, give us one second to get the PowerPoint up.
Okay, that's okay. I can introduce myself while you're pulling up. There we go. Awesome. So, my name is Jessie Pidiya. I am a 1st grade teacher at Ash Creek. I also wear lots of hats in the community. I'm a community member. I've lived here since 2001. My husband went through Central School District. I did not. I'm from Massachusetts. I'm a parent, so I have a daughter who graduated last year. Um, I'm a parent, so I have a daughter who graduated last year, and we have a son also who's a senior this year. Um, I'm also a union leader, so I'm a member of our executive committee as Ash Creek's building representative, and I'm here tonight. Um, to share with you a little bit as their building rep, so I put out to the staff at Ash Creek, asking if anyone had anything that they wanted to share with the board about what's been going on at Ash Creek. And I got a lot of stuff back, so I tried to put it into a presentation for you that wasn't too long, but we had a lot to say, so. Emily, you can go ahead, um, the next slide. So the first slide, uh, let me move myself here because I'm blocking myself. Um, I wanted to introduce our P E club that our P E teacher, Mr. Anderson, is doing. He has, um, first and second graders coming on Mondays and third, fourth and fifth graders coming on Tuesdays for a half hour each. And it's just giving them, um, an opportunity to get some extra movement, some extra, um, P E time and some extra FaceTime with him and a little more of a relaxed setting than their normal P E class. And next slide. Okay, um, another club that we have going on right now, Ms. Flugum, who is our amazing music teacher, is doing a recorder club. Um, she's doing it with all third through fifth graders, and then there's some second graders who are in a blend who are also welcome to join. Um, she does level one on Wednesdays and level two and three on Thursdays for a half hour each. Right now, we have a total of thirty-seven students. Um, level one's the yarn belts, level two's the colored bands, and level three is the beads, and basically they get to choose a song to work on or play during that time with a group that's kind of at their same level. Thank you. Okay, so this one's big for me because I'm a first grade teacher and this was ours. So the first grade team at Ash Creek actually just won a grant through our, um, through our union, through the O E A, the Promising Practices Grant. So the three of us on the team got five hundred dollars to increase the cultural diversity of our classroom literature, because as teachers, we don't usually get money to buy new books, so this was really exciting. Our goal was, um, to buy books to help students see themselves, um, in their stories as well as other people. Um, and not only did we look for books where they would see themselves, but also we tried to focus on, um, books that were like contemporary stories that were written by people of color. So a lot of these stories, uh, the authors have a very personal connection to the story, and they're amazing. So we were able to get, um, thirty-nine books between three classrooms. We got thirteen books each, they're hardbacks, and you can just see the selection here that we were able to put into our classroom and put to use right away. So that was a really, really amazing thing to get this year. Um, I had to share this, so this is Hadley, and her mom said I could share this picture with you. This is a picture that I received, um, in messaging after the week, uh, that we spent kind of learning about Martin Luther King during the holiday and the presidential inauguration. Um, and the message that she gave, so she was showing her with this book, and she wanted to let me know that that weekend they had gone book shopping, and Hadley was allowed to choose out any book that she wanted. And some of the books included toys, and her mom said, nope, she was all about, she wanted to, she wanted to learn more about Martin Luther King. She said they've been reading it together like crazy. I know since then they've bought more books, and she just wanted to throw out an appreciation, saying how much school has been opening her mind and thanking teachers for the way that they're teaching. So that was a really fun thing to see. Um, we now have student leadership at Ash Creek, we have a student leadership team. Um, and what they wanted to say is that because student voice and engagement is really important in Ash Creek, that all fourth and fifth graders were invited to complete an application to join student leadership. They meet every Monday. Um, their advisors are Mrs. Flugo, Mr. Anderson, our P E and music teachers. And then Mrs. Hunt, Mrs. Navar, Mrs. Michael, our S E L team, our socio-emotional learning team, and our principal, Mrs. Wildthing. Advised them, we have about twenty students right now on the team. Um, one of the things that they're doing right now, they're focusing on supporting the Ella Kirin Food Bank by sharing out with the community how the food banks supports the community and also advertising, so they've been creating posters to display in the community, making a video, they're designing digital posters. Um, they've also been working really closely with our P B I S team at the school to make videos to be shared out with students and families. Um, to teach those new school-wide routines and preparations for students returning to the building. So kind of all these things that are gonna be new if and when students return, um, to help the kids understand it and to hear it from another student, which is really important. They have adults talking to them a lot, so when they hear their peers sharing information with them, it's really helpful, like, hey, this is the door you're gonna use, or this is, we're gonna use hand sanitizer, so. Also, next week Patty from the Food Bank will be joining the meeting, and she's gonna be sharing out some more about the Food Bank and answering questions that the students have. Okay, so there's several slides on this one, they'll go pretty fast. The fourth grade team just finished a holidays in different countries unit. Um, each student was able to choose a country to research, and then they created a project to show what they had learned. And there's just some neat pictures here to show the different ways that the students were able to showcase what they had learned. On the left, you can see a diorama that a student made about the Amazon River in Brazil. Um, they shared that picture, um, with this, uh, teacher. And then on the right, you can see actually a digital brochure that a student created on Switzerland. And then the next slide, um, oh. Oh, they might have gotten out of order, okay. No, that might be me, Emily, I was messing with them today, I might have put them out of order. We'll go back to fourth grade when we come back to it. Go ahead, yeah, we can go here. Okay, um, this is just a big time shout-out. We have an amazing food services team. They've been out in the weather every day, serving lunches to our communities, children and families. Uh, making sure that all students are fed who need food, so, um, Ms. Diaz, Mrs. Rivas, and, uh, Mrs. Seaborn. Um, they, I get the opportunity, I often go out for a walk during the time that they're serving lunches, and it's really fun to watch the kids kind of pop out of their cars and greet them, and they're so excited to see them, so they're doing some really amazing work as our, um, as they are around the community at the other schools, but this is our crew, and they're out there every day, so, um, rain or shine. Okay, there's some more of the fourth grade. Um, so you can just see a couple more of the brochures, the two, the one in the middle and the one on the left are also ones that children made um, by hand on paper. And then up there in the right is another, uh, just example of a di- a digital brochure, so it's really exciting to see um, some of the learning that the kids are doing digitally, the, the abilities and the, the, the way that they're embracing technology and, um, learning how to do new things that they may not have done in the classroom, so that's some of the fun things that we're seeing as they're creating. Um, these projects and also having the ability to choose how they want to put forth their creativity, whether they want to make something hands-on or they want to create something in the digital world. And I think, yeah, this might be the last fourth grade one, so this is just a couple examples of, um, students who did a fork, forest ecosystem, and obviously these are ones that they did by hand um, and shared with their teammates, um, through video and through pictures. I think that's the last one. Oh, no, this one's really cool. Um, another student, he made, oh. He made, um, desert ecosystem digital flashcards, so this is just an example of kind of the front of his project and then one of his flashcards, so I thought that was pretty cool. I know, I know they're surpassing me in my ability to do digital work, so. Okay, um, this was just something that the first grade team actually wanted to share, so like I said, we spent a week kind of focusing, we took the Martin Luther King holiday and the presidential inauguration and the fact that, um, if you look over there on the left where it says purposeful people, I don't know if anyone's ever talked to you about this before, but the elementary schools adopted a new socio-emotional curriculum this year called Purposeful People, which is amazing. Um, and every month it focuses on a different character trait, so so far we've had courage, respect, perseverance, gratitude. Honesty was last month in January, and we just started kindness today. Um, so it went really well. On the right there, you can see a brainstorm poster that my class did in terms of talking about what a good leader is, and I had to share that because these kids are so amazing. You can see a little bit of what they said, these are their words. Um, that third one down, leads people in what they should do, the student who shared that wanted me to be sure that I wrote leads people in what they should do, not tells people what to do. Um, so, so what they're learning, um, in terms of what makes a good leader, um, all of those character traits that are kind of wrapped up into that have been really fun to watch. Um, and then down there, just in the middle, I just put a couple of the social studies standards that were taught, um, with this week. There were many more, but kind of that idea of, um, describing the responsibilities of leaders and team members and demonstrate, demonstrating the ability to be both. That's a little bit what we've been doing in social studies. Okay, so this is a picture to showcase, I don't know how much you get a chance to kind of see what it looks like, this is the teacher view, so this isn't what the kids see. Um, but what you're looking at right here is a math small group, so you can see that there are five students. And these are five students that are kind of all working at the same mathematical level. Um, and what this picture is showing, you can see that R S L E is holding up her board there, so she was given the opportunity um, in two minutes to write as no, as many numbers as you can. And then they showcase their work one by one or one does it each day. Um, this is a way to check for math fluency, to check for accuracy, and then also to just to do a quick reteach, so after two minutes, she held up her board. So that's her fluency, how fast she can write those numbers. Um, then her accuracy can be immediate, immediately checked by the teacher, like you can see that she has all of her numbers present. But then if you look, you can see that her fours and nines are backwards, so that allows the teacher to do a quick reteach in the moment. Um, a mini lesson with students perhaps on number formation, how to make those numbers. You can also see that right now Gabriella is talking, she's lit up in green there on the bottom left, so she is actually reflecting on and reacting to, um, her teammates' work during the small group work. Okay, lunch bunch. So Ash Creek has something called Lunch Bunch. And the kids right now have an hour-long break, and the first half hour of their lunch, they're invited to meet with Mrs. Hunt, Mrs. Michael and Mrs. Navar. There's about twenty kids who are meeting for Lunch Bunch daily, and it's really just an opportunity for them to connect with each other, learn about building character and have like some slightly unstructured time like they would when they're in school. Um, it starts out, the kids are given the opportunity to share how they're feeling, what they did over the weekend, whatever's on their mind. And then they usually struck, or they, um, transition to an activity that focuses on that character trait of the month that I was telling you about, so for instance, down on the right, you can see an honesty wheel, that was in January. The kids get to spin it, they get to take turns, um. And then it just has different scenarios that give them an opportunity to talk about what choices they would make and how they would handle different scenarios and just kind of get them talking about those things. Um, and then they usually kind of end with an upbeat song and a share out. Okay, so these are just some of the words of the students who, uh, come to Lunch Bunch, they wanted to have their words shared as well. So Bella said I get to talk to people and play games while eating. Um, Jordan said I get to see everybody every day and hang out. Abram says I get to talk with other people while I eat lunch. Um, Ally said when we started school, I didn't have anyone to eat lunch with, my teacher suggested Lunch Bunch, I'm excited to talk to other people while I eat lunch. Blake said I like hanging out with everyone. Um, Dylan said we play fun games and talk about different character traits. And then, um, let me see if I can move. So on my screen, it's blocking, actually, um, I forget whose that was down at the bottom, but it was kind of cool. He said I like the wheel, we even use it at home to decide, I think he said what's for dinner, oh, there it is. Yeah, Brayden said what's for dinner, so it's actually really kind of a cool way for parents to kind of learn some strategies um, for use at home as well, that they're using it at home and using some of these, um, strategies. All right, um, in addition, our socio-emotional team also gets a chance to, um, meet one-on-one with some students. Um, and Mary Michael, who's one of our socio-emotional leaders at the school, shared, and she got permission from this student and his mom because she thought this was so cool, he shared one day that he was feeling angry. And it just had to do with something that he felt like he wasn't very good at. And so now before he says goodbye, he focuses on sharing something he is good at, and he really took it to heart and then went ahead and made a sixteen-slide presentation, and said he's just gonna keep adding to it, so it's all about the things he's good at. Um, he's been, he's getting ready to share the slideshow at Lunch Bunch, um, and other kids are starting to email in videos as well, focusing on what they're good at. And actually, the next slide here is an example of, oh, so here's his, his cover, he called it the things I'm really good at, Colton Sap did this. And then the next page is just one example from his slideshow, so he's really good at football, so this was a slide that he shared. Super proud, he's super excited that I, we are gonna share it here tonight, so. All right, Ms. Nancy just wanted to share that her afternoon groups are currently building and creating slideshows about presidents. And we, yeah, okay, um, so Mrs. Monroe, she'll, she's our Tosa, and she's one of our superwoman at the school. And she just wanted to share out quickly about how third through fifth grade tier three, which is our intensive reading intervention groups are doing. We currently in the third through fifth grade levels have thirty-four students who are working at this intensive level. Um, there are four IAs and then Mrs. Monroe who are teaching the groups, there are seven groups total that are meeting Tuesday through Friday. Um, and this, and Mrs. Monroe just really wanted to share, she was excited about the fact that the methods that they're using are really good for all learners, but particularly our emergent bilingual students in the groups. Um, there's a lot of visualization, there's a lot of repetition, and there's a lot of vocabulary being used. And they're getting actual books sent home that they're reading in the groups together while they focus on their vocabulary development and the ability to read in different ways. Okay, um, special ed, uh, I just actually put their words right in here, they wanted to share out some of the successes that they're seeing this year. Um, all of the students in math groups have made at least a half a year's growth already. Um, this was before we hit the half year. All students in gr- in grades, um, in third and fourth groups, oop typo on my part, um, they've made at least half a year's growth in reading and comprehension skills. They're currently working on enhancing their writing skills and just started their reasoning and writing curriculum with the fourth and fifth graders. And then in social skills, special ed is working on relationship building with peers and adults, so learning how to identify and solve problems, how to handle stress, and then also how to persevere, which is a big theme for this year. Um, and then, and then she just wanted to share that the assistants in special ed have been doing such an excellent job supporting those social skills groups and, and in the instruction every week. Okay, this is Nori, and this is just another example, so I showed you a math example, so this is an example from a reading group. Um, we've been focusing a lot on retail, so the ability to not only understand a story but to be able to retell it, that you understand what happened, you can retell it in sequence, you can use those sequencing words. So this is just an example again from another small group, there's, uh, looks like five stu- four students in this group. Um, they read a story together, they focused on comprehension, and then they worked on their writing on dry erase boards, all of the kids have a dry erase board and marker and eraser, and we make sure they do, and the second they say they can't find it, we usually send them a new one because it's so amazing how much they're able to do and share with us, so this is her retell about the story that they were doing. And just in this little glimpse of what she did, I kind of put ideas around of what we can focus on for doing checks for accuracy and her understanding, so we can see if she understood the story. Um, did she use punctuation in her writing? Did she use finger spaces in her writing? Are her sight words spelled correctly? Um, is she sounding out unknown words? Um, is she using sequencing words first, next, then, after that? Is she using a left alignment when she's writing, and then properly using a return sweep when she gets to the end, returning to the left? And is she starting her sentences with capital letters? And just like in math, this is a really great way for the students to kind of check in with each other, and again, the teacher can see if a student is missing some of these things. They can do a quick reteach on the spot for that group. Okay, last slide. This is pretty exciting. Um, this is Lila, she's one of our amazing fifth graders, and she created the winning design for the Ash Creek P T A's t-shirt design contest. So she'll be getting a free t-shirt and a gift card from a local business from our P T A. And pretty soon, if you want one of these sweet t-shirts that say stronger together, ACES, you will be able to order one through our P T A because this is her design and this is what will be on our t-shirts this year. And that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you, Jessie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to our O S A, O S E A update. Do we have Cindy joining us?
As we're waiting, I think a couple, just want to highlight a couple pieces from Ash Creek. It was very clear in a couple of the slides, you saw students really doing the work together, and then where teachers were adding in those instructional, uh, points, I think that is a huge part of learning and growth for students, the ability for them to learn and grow with each other, and then having excellent teachers to be there to do, you know, in the moment, helping them, uh, maybe make a shift or a quick lesson. Uh, that's, that's what it's supposed to look like, uh, every day, and I'm just proud of what, uh, Ash Creek and what they're doing and have all of our schools continuing to do in this distance learning, so thank you for that.
Can I ask Jessie a question before she gets off, if she hasn't? Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes, we're checking.
Um, my question was for Jessie, with some of those, they sound fantastic, like the P E group and the recorder group. Are those actually, students are coming into buildings?
Um, I don't see myself, but can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
Um, no, this is completely virtual, so they're coming in through the platform, through the virtual platform, and they're participating virtually.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Cindy, are you there?
Here we go, how about that now? Hello, board. And others, I, um, just wanted to give you an update on what the O S E A. Uh, we've been involved in getting information from the classified employees, and it's, uh, in the way of surveys. One survey was sent out last week, and the, those questions were put And the, those questions were put into scenarios, whether uh, they're comfortable returning to work with children. Without being fully vaccinated. Are you comfortable returning to work? Um, if students are in the vicinity, maybe not just in your room, but in the building itself. Are you comfortable returning to, to work, to actually work one on one with the students, assuming you're not fully vaccinated? And are you comfortable returning to work if you are fully vaccinated? So and um, we've gotten these answers and they've been handed over to the district administration. And together we are working on a plan to dress, address all these issues. There is no perfect solution to be found, but a lot of hard work is going on to this process. And, and that goes with the conversations that we're having at different meetings. So moving forward, we feel like it is important on being um, providing this in-person instruction. Um, so we are sending out another survey, which just finished up today. To uh, see how the educational assistance um. Are feeling about working so close in person. And again, those questions. Will be sent out to the administrative and we will be working with them to follow up with those uh, a plan to. Get those concerns addressed. And that's uh, about it for us as the union. I can tell you that food service and transportation has been working with this um. Covid since March the thirteenth of last year. Um, we've had a lot of procedures put in place and we do feel very safe with what they've planned. And we just really want to hear a lot from IAs, office staff. Um, custodial. Because we need to, you know, see where your questions are. To get you some help out there in the areas that you tell us from these surveys that you're concerned about. So that is it. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Hey Cindy.
Yes. I'm here.
Yep, she can hear you.
Okay. The uh, the surveys that you, that you took, um, when do you anticipate being able to get? Like an accurate count of who wants what, uh, as far as the teachers and the IAs?
It, it will be done. Um, I know that the second survey was ended today, so we will have that information tomorrow. Um, probably going out, a report will be put together and, and to um. Jennifer by Wednesday.
No, that's quick. That's awesome. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Cindy.
You're welcome.
Okay, that brings us to our financial and program reports. Cece, you ready to take that on?
I am. Thank you, Chair Love. Um, not much to report. The financial report uh, for as of December thirty-first. Uh, for the general fund was attached as part of the agenda. And a little bit of analysis about it. Again, just kind of showing what we know to be true. This time of year already, um, halfway through the fiscal year. And that as anticipated, revenues were still coming in about where we anticipate so far. Uh, there have not been repercussions from O D E. There have not been adjustments to the current year. State School Fund, uh, but we do anticipate getting adjustments after this month. Districts were asked to report on current enrollment. Um, and ours is down from our primary estimate early um, last year. So we expect potentially to see some adjustments in revenue coming by next time I report to you. Expenses are down as anticipated for things like substitutes. Um, that's one. Property services, obviously, we're not using as much water. And as uh, a lot of our utility costs are lower this year. We've also had a very mild winter, which always helps that. But uh, the um. Uh, purchase of Chromebooks, for example, uh, would be much higher, except they are just not available. We are still trying to replace old Chromebooks and continue to upgrade the Chromebooks we have. And uh, we have a lot of money budgeted for that this year, but there, that is a supply chain issue. So um, there's some other expenses we're trying to get in this year and um, we'll keep you updated on that. Uh, it mentions a quarterly risk analysis and we didn't get that prepared uh, for you as we were. Trying to work through these other reopening issues. So. I don't have anything on that, but I will take questions about the financial report.
Hi Cece, um, I was curious if, if you could give us any feedback with regards to. Um, when we stopped using Fuel K twelve for upper levels. Um, I know some still are, but. For the most part, have we seen any type of conversation with them about when we might be getting a refund? Or see some of that money back because it was a great, large amount of money?
So funny you should ask. We have not paid them a dime. We have not written one single check to Fuel Ed. They've been providing this um, and working for us since July for no money. But uh, on the action item tonight that was mailed to you unfortunately late today. Um, we are per- we have received, just received uh, last Thursday, an amendment from them. And so we'll be, we'll be going over that shortly.
Thank you, Cece.
Okay, any questions for Cece? Okay, uh, let me just do a bit of a process check. So we have our equity committee report, then a graduation rates report. Then we'll get to the superintendent's report. And for those of you watching, you know, many of the questions that came up during our public comments, we're gonna try to address. During the superintendent's report. So we were trying to, you know, target about a two hour meeting tonight. We obviously can go longer than that, but um. Just keep that in mind. So we'll do equity, graduation, then get to the superintendent's report. So do we have Sterling on for the equity committee report?
Joining us this evening are Sterling Roberts from Independence Elementary and Alicia Preston from Monmouth Elementary. To update the board on the progress of the district equity committee, which they are both a part of. So welcome Sterling and Alicia. We'll hand it off to you. Oh, hold on, hold on one second. There we go. Now we got both.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Um, as Dr. Covista said, my name is Sterling Roberts. And I'm the music teacher over at Independence Elementary and I'm pleased to join you with my colleague Alicia Preston at Monmouth Elementary. To give you an update on the district equity committee. Um, we are very excited to get the ball rolling, um, with prioritizing the tasks we felt are most important moving forward. With the rest of the twenty twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year and to prepare us for the fall. Of the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two school year as we continue our mission to support. And implement the tenets of an anti-racist and anti-biased education. Uh, we agreed on three action tasks after filling out a survey last month. Invested in these tasks through subcommittees addressing, and we have the committees in the next slide. Um, equity, professional learning, um, student voices and staff of color voices. And establishing equity teams at all schools and at the district office. And so we have about four to six members on each team. Um, but we're really taking the time to break out and really work hard on trying to figure out how we're gonna make this a reality. Um, so the goals of the equity professional learning um, subcommittee is just that the district as a whole, we want to have a common language. Um, in addressing equity and anti-racism. Uh, we want to make sure that we hold ourselves accountable. So when new hires come in, um, that they're also. Uh, they understand what we're looking for in terms of how to move forward with equitable practices. Um, that we're not just looking at anti-racist education and anti-biased education as just a fad. We want to really embody and embrace the policies and the practices that we keep striving towards. Um, and just recognizing any equity bear barriers. Um, as we move forward, we know things aren't perfect. And that we always have to constantly um, reflect and, and push forward. Um, so uh, we kind of set up each subcommittee, set out a plan. And for this equity professional learning subcommittee, um, by the end of this school year. Um, we are hoping to have an equity filter assessment that'll help give us the baseline data for our one-year, three-year and five-year. Plan. Um, and that with that data, um, we can uh, find that initial baseline training that we need. Um, for equity and it'll help us go, get a clear vision for that. Um, and then just, we want to keep trying to define anti-racism and intersectionality. Um, as it's related to our own stance as a district. Um, through just the communication that we have with board policies and budget development, staff development, student voice. And the way that we uh, through our hiring practices and just resources that were given over the summer. We want to try to make anti-racism and intersectionally as clear as we can. Um, and so that would be the end of the, of this year, but then hopefully going into year one of, of next year. That um, all staff and the board would complete a common training on equity. Um, and then each subsequent year that all staff would participate in some sort of refresher training. Um, and any new staff would also be held accountable through an initial training and, and just keep refreshing every year.
Great job Sterling. Um, so my name is Alicia. I teach first grade at MES. And I am on the student voices and staff of color voices. And excitingly, some of these things are already in motion. And as an equity team, we couldn't be more excited to see the growth within our own staffs and our buildings. And are excited to start to work towards collective vision on these things. So one of our jobs with our committee is to develop student voice. And so one goal that we have is that every building will have a student equity team. And that they would work in tandem with the other school buildings equity teams. So we have another team that's focused on that that we'll talk about later, building staff equity teams. But we'd like to have student ones that also work together to do some of the things that Ash Creek is doing with their leadership team to. You know, tackle some of our assemblies and to be able to work with our younger students and talking to them about these important things. What does it mean when you're six to be anti-racist? What does it mean to have equity within your school? And giving them power and a voice in that. And we have kind of created our goals within these slides. So our goal would be that we've created applications or nominations. Depending on your grade level for student equity teams by spring. Um, this is something we've really wanted to stress to teachers when we're doing nominations is that we're making this um, for all students. And we don't want it to be just the students that view themselves as leaders, but maybe our students that don't yet know they have amazing leadership qualities. That we want to help them develop and bring out. And then we also are working for our student voice on obtaining data all the way from K all the way through twelve. Specifically for our students of color, looking at attendance, achievement, the impact of Covid. And so we are actively working on that now and our goal is to have all of the data together by the end of February. On our staff side, we are working hard to create brave sta- spaces where staff feel comfortable to share honestly about their experience. And we're hoping that this is something that um, these hard conversations that we are having now and that they continue to be ongoing. Uh, part of that is point number three, they're creating safe affinity groups. We talked about how safety is really created among common communities. So we want to start by creating the safety within our own buildings by March. And be having these conversations, whole staff. I know that in MES and Ash Creek, I know they did too, have been starting to talk about and giving equity committee. Within their buildings, a time during their whole staff meetings to have some discussion and talk about what equity means for us as a staff and for us as a district. We are working on creating a questionnaire for staff of color that we'd like to have out by March. Talk about their experiences working in our district in a way that they can be honest and talk to us about where are our blind spots? What are we missing and what are the areas that you need us to do better? Um, like Sterling said, this is a process. We're learning and we're all going to be learning. But we want to start to have some of those real hard conversations that need to happen for us to move forward. And talking about the equity trainings that we would like to be having for all staff come fall twenty twenty-one. We'd really like these to be taught by people and staff of color. Um, and we talked a lot about how that could even be some of the teachers of the year from the past, whatever that looks like. But making sure that we are giving a voice there. And then we also talked about how we need to work on retaining our staff of color and promoting them within our system. As well as having our white colleagues that are respectful of all people and all positions. And everyone truly shows that we are valuing all cultures and backgrounds and letting that be what we're known for as a district. When we are looking at hiring people and, and looking at how we recruit staff. Are those values that we are upholding and are those things that are very clear when they look at our staff and the way that we talk to each other? The things that we say, the way we run our classrooms, um, all of those sorts of things.
And so um, the goal of our third subcommittee, um, the creating equity teams in every building. Is that we just want to make sure every, at the end of this year, um, this school year, that we have an equity team established at every building. Um, as we just hold each other accountable and we share conversations from the district committee to um, our building specific equity teams. And um, to do so, um, our plan in the next slide. Um, is that we focus on just how to do the recruiting um, process. Um, so kind of relying on each other as we have, the high school already has the equity team. They've had theirs probably the longest in the Nash Creek and they're still going strong. MES has just joined on this year and Tomage has started to have that, um, those conversations as they recruit. Uh, members on their equity team. Um, so we're wanting to rely on each other. Um, I know I guess we're gonna try to work together, um, for members of the district equity team to present to the entire staff. As well as the um, district office, um, so that we have a way to kind of. Inspire us to keep on the path towards um, keeping us accountable with equity. Um, as we keep going and as, so we're hoping to get that by March to April. Um, and then our first steps as we build these teams from April on to the summer. Is that we just share the work that we're doing in the district uh, equity team with the building level teams. Um, we can make sure that it's ongoing. If someone wants to join, you can either um, fill out the application. Or just come and, and really be invited into the space of the conversations that we're having. And then just using the equity um, building teams to start that conversation. Um, and relate it more to our specific um, students that we deal with, families that we deal with, um, within the schools. And so those approaches could include after school meetings, um, when we're back in person as well as um, book studies. Um, and other resources out there. We're hoping to get a larger community onto this. So we have um, grade level representatives as our early adopters on both the primary intermediate level. Um, and that we're representing classified voices, parent voices and student voices. So we want to do as much collaboration as we can um, across our community through the equity work that we can have all together.
Something that's fairly new that we're really excited about is that Western has been given a grant to develop and implement. Some sort of equity and professional development and training. And they got to choose an educational partner. And they have invited us to join them in that. And our equity team, the last time we met, we just voted yes to joining them. Um, we don't have a lot of info yet about what this is gonna look like, but we're really excited about the opportunity to be able to work within community. To create um, some training and development that's going to benefit their staff, our staff and ultimately our students. Any questions?
Great update and a lot of progress you all are making. That's really exciting. So. Assume you guys want to keep uh, reporting every month. I think it's working well to, to kind of keep the momentum up.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, so thanks for presenting and uh, keep up the great work. We'll see you guys or someone else from the equity team next month. We'll see you guys or someone else from the equity team next month. Thank you both. Okay, uh, and then the next topic is an update on our graduation rates from the past year. So I'll turn it over to Principal Servignyong.
Yeah, Principal Servignyong are going to sort of tag-team this a little bit. So um, she is here this evening. Thank you. Uh, and we're going to pull the PowerPoint up real quickly. We're just going to, the couple topics we're going to go over. We're going to first just do a quick dive into uh, just some high points of the data. Um, that we have, uh, nope, you're good. Next one. That one. Nope, it's the one next to it. Um, so we're going to do uh, share out of a four trend, uh, four-year trend of the data. Um, and as she's pulling that up, this data includes different background uh, breakdowns of the graduation rates, including gender, ethnicity, and other student groups identified by the Oregon Department of Education, and we'll talk a little bit about that. Um, and we're going to highlight the successes as well as the continued areas of growth we see to support our students towards on-time graduation. And this is specifically focused on four-year uh, cohort. Uh, and then finally, I'm going to turn it over. She'll do the second half of the data. Principal Servignyong will highlight and review uh, high school success, which is a investment that we have uh, that was passed by the legislature several years ago. And how they're using this money to support students towards graduation and and just that growth within the high school. So um, that is our focus today. So if we can go to the next slide. Uh, so overall, there are some really hu- great successes. Overall, our students, uh, we graduated for the nineteen-twenty school year at eighty-four percent. That's a three percent. Excuse me. Yes, that is a three percent uh, increase from last year. Uh, and then you can also see we have uh, increased, uh, we are above the state average, which is seventy-nine percent. Uh, you can see that from our, our female students, we uh, graduated five percent higher at ninety percent of our stu- female students graduated on time uh, from the previous year, and we are also eight percent higher than the state average. And then finally, our male students, they had a slight increase by two percent from the previous year, but also had uh, two percent uh, from the state average. Next slide for me, please. So this slide shows several different uh, ethnicity groups. And again, that third column in is our, our current graduation rates. Uh, these overall numbers are students uh, that we have at the high school that are less than one percent of our student population. Uh, so these are, are several of the areas where our population or the N, you'll hear me say every once in a while, the number of students uh, is not very uh, large. Uh, so again, you can see just in that third column and then the second column is the state average. We are below the state average for all four of these categories of students. Um, and then where you see the asterisk, that denotes that we didn't have any students identified for that group during that year. So again, small n's, um, but again, we have work to do in, in, in the area in supporting our American Indian, Alaska Native, Asian, Asian Pacific Islander uh, students. Next slide for me, please. Uh, next group uh, continues with some of our uh, at black African-American Hispanic Latin A, O, X, multiracial and white students. Um, you can see we have had a large increase over forty-five percent uh, for students graduating in rates for our black students. Uh, and they're also twenty-seven percent higher than the state average. Um, we, for our Latin A, X, O students, uh, we continue to be above the state average by four percent. Uh, but you can see we had a one percent drop. That's not statistically significant. However, I would comment that that is really a no growth. Uh, so that's a flat number uh, for our students uh, in that area for our graduation this past year. Uh, the next group are multiracial students. Again, we're also flat from the previous year. However, we're still eight percent above the state average. Uh, and with that, and then finally with our uh, white students, again, we saw a nine percent increase from the previous year at ninety percent. And again, we're ten percent higher than the state average for our white students. So again, some areas of great growth and some areas where we still have some work to do uh, as we continue uh, forward, but um, just Donna's going to finish us out with the rest of the data uh, and then share a little bit about high school success.
Yeah, thank you, Jen, and thank you to the school board for having us here tonight to talk about uh, some of the great work that's happening in the schools to increase our graduation rates. Um, or economically, I'm just going to continue with the data so that you can see again where we are in comparison to last year and then in comparison to the state of Oregon. Our economically disadvantaged students, uh, we increased by five percent and they're uh, an eight percent average over the state. Um, sped is an area where we need to continue to um, focus our work at the high school. Um, we lost some gains from the year previously, but we are um, at the same with the state of Oregon at that state average. Um, our English language learners uh, from previous year, we've gone up two percent. Um, and then our underserved races have gone down two percent. So underserved races uh, that included in that group, it's uh, identified by the state of Oregon. Uh, if their race and ethnicity is black, African-American, Hispanic, Latino, American Indian, Alaska Native, or native Hawaiian Pacific Islander. So those are the state identified groups that fit within that category there. Um, and Emily, next slide. Or Jared. Um, on this page, looking at uh, our um, migrant, there is again another area of focus. Um, we had some changes in some of our school systems that we can look at for how that has impacted. Um, and I think the switch to uh, comprehensive distance learning last year in the spring certainly had an impact on that population. Um, we're well below the state average there and also quite a bit of uh, a dip from where we were the previous year. So that's something that we're going to need to take a look at as a school. Um, our homeless students, we're keeping, uh, we didn't lose any there, uh, no gains, but still above the state average. CTE participants, that is for any student who's taken any kind of a CTE class. Uh, the state is really focusing on how a connection to, so CTE is career technical education. So any kind of a class that has a connection to those high wage, high demand uh, trades. Um, they count within that category. And then CTE concentrators are students who complete an entire pathway within a program. And so um, we've made gains uh, both in both categories as a school and then um, above and close to where the state average is in that category as well. So on this last slide, I just wanted to talk about some of the work that we've been doing with the state grant. It's called High School Success. Came into effect in Oregon uh, the almost four years ago. Um, the intent of the monies that the state allotted to high schools across the state is to increase graduation rates. And so that comes in three buckets. One is increasing CTE programming. Uh, we see in research that students who are connected to a career pathway um, and have a passion, uh, something that they're, they're really connected to as they go through high school. It does help them staying on track and on time for graduation. Um, another is college and career readiness. Um, and then the third bucket is uh, just increasing at-risk uh, students and their uh, graduation rates and on-time graduation. So some of the things that we've been doing as a school. Um, first off, we have hired a dedicated college and career coordinator, Marco Aguirre, who works tirelessly with our students um, to prepare them for next steps, really for college. Um, he does a lot of helping with our um, college visits, organizing uh, groups that come to our school to visit with students about their colleges and what it takes to um, apply there and um, get into those schools. Not only just to be admitted, but also to earn scholarships to go. Uh, we've seen quite an increase in our students and uh, the uh, scholarships that have been awarded because of the work that um, Marco and our MCL club are doing with our students across the school. Um, we also have a career co- uh, CTE coordinator, Jeff Santoni, who is helping us with um, building out our CTE programming to include internships, um, real-life connections to career certifications so that when students leave our schools, um, they're really hirable. They've got a resume that looks solid, um, and they're ready to step in, like I said, to those high-wage, high-demand jobs. And so we're currently building those programs and systems out, um, using some of the investment there to make sure that our uh, programs are industry standard. Um, and that also, um, you know, the certifications that students are earning are things that uh, the industries want to see in our students. We've also hired a graduation coach, Maria Martinez, who works really closely with our most at-risk students. Um, she is constantly reaching out, calling, setting up parent meetings. Um, what we call bird-dogging students. And so she really works just to keep those connections. She uh, calls, she meets with um, and works with students very closely on their plans. Um, and when we see that things aren't fitting, looking at what are some alternate options that students might be able to access to be able to finish and complete. Um, our school counselors also are working with every senior on a graduation plan, making sure that they are on track with their credits. Notes and notices go home to families when we notice that there is um, perhaps a need for credit recovery or a, a space like our senior work samples that typically need to be done this time of year. Um, and so they're really connecting with parents, making sure that they're aware where their students stand, what needs to be done so that all, all of our students are ready for graduation. Um, we have formed a ninth-on-track team at our school. So looking at not just on the back end, making sure that we help salvage or credit recover for students, but helping our ninth graders stay on track so that they're earning those six credits that they need their freshman year to be on track and ready to graduate on time. And so our team works really closely to identify where we need to intervene um, and how we can help tip students back into that green zone so that they are um, finishing ninth grade, uh, feeling accomplished and ready to uh, maintain their high school career and graduate on time. Uh, we have Nikki Hanson and Bob Macbeth who work with students in our summer school programming, uh, credit recovering uh, when necessary, and then also for our fifth year, or sorry, our seniors who don't quite complete. Um, gives them that little extra time after June to complete their Oregon diploma. Um, Alt Ed program, meaning we opened up last year. It's taken a little bit of a twist this year because of our um, comprehensive distance learning, but we're still working on um, you know, if, if the brick and mortar building isn't really working well for our students, how do we get them into a setting uh, that will work for keeping them on track? Um, and there we have a partnership with CSC um, and YNEMA both for GED options. And some, some career training for students to help keep them moving forward. I already talked about developing the CTE programming and then um, we've also been developing a care team approach. So we've got a whole team of counselors, our Polk County um, counselor, our uh, front office staff, who a lot of them are, have gone through what's called edge coaching. It's teaching students um, executive functioning skills. So they really coach for how to set personal goals, break things down into manageable steps um, and take up habits that will help keep them on track. We have a wellness room now that's also an intervention for us where students learn self-regulation so that they know when they're wanting to uh, get in that fight or flight mode, that they're not fleeing from classrooms or what we might know as skipping. Um, it helps students understand when they get to that feeling of like, I've got to get out of here. I can't be here. That they really do have strategies to be able to take a deep breath and come back to the work. Um, and then Taylor Lane, who works in our after-school program, we just got that back up in a way. We're really excited to offer some supports for our students. Um, in, in that sort of peer-to-peer help and uh, with some college tutors who are there to help them with homework after school and keeping their studies moving forward. And then finally, just continuing our data and progress monitoring uh, so that we know where our students are and how we can step in um, when that's necessary. And our last class slide is just, uh, if you have questions about where we are as a school. Um, happy to field those.
Um, Darcy, I think you're I don't know if I'll ever get used to unmuting. Sorry about that. Um, so I had a few questions with regards to um, uh, graduation. Also, I was actually able to talk with Mrs. Larson and Mrs. Wade about stuff with regards to, you know, last year and years before. And I was thinking that for our parents, it might be helpful for them to know. Um, are we, do we have a plan? It sounds like I just found out today that Mr. Baldwin is in charge of some of that. And I was given his number, but I wasn't able to contact him that um, wh- what is in fact happening with regards to that for our seniors? I don't know if we can send stuff out. Um, what are our plans for graduation? Just in that momentum of moving forward? And then um, also with regards to seniors, with the seniors that we have said some Lippi is going to take place with our seniors on the sixteenth, um, or within that range. Are we bringing in students who are not showing up on their Zoom meetings or their Google meets? Are we bringing in students who are failing? Are we bringing in students on IEPs? Like which students are actually coming in? In, and in how many? Like, are we trying to get the senior class back in? Um, to help celebrate them, say goodbye to the building, see their friends? Or is this, is this kind of a forsake of not knowing better language to use, like a salvage mission for our seniors?
So there was a lot in there. I'm going to take that back one step at a time. So as far as graduation goes, we have been meeting and all of these are available on our school website. There's a link for the class of twenty twenty-one. So um, parents can go and see, we've been having regular meetings with our senior class. Uh, we do them virtually. It's a class assembly that happens during PSP. So Mr. Baldwin, and then we've got a team of uh, staff who helped to plan for our seniors. Uh, they've been meeting to talk with our students about what to expect um, and what we know we can do and what we don't know that's still unknown out there. What's really challenging about giving information about graduation is we don't know yet what our COVID conditions are going to be in June. So if I had to plan graduation from today's standards, right now we're allowed up to fifty in an outdoor space. Um, that's, that would look like something similar to what we did last year. Um, with small groups coming in, we did, if you remember, we did um, over thirty graduation mini-graduation ceremonies. Um, and we found a way to honor and celebrate every single one of those students. Um, and if that's the way that we need to build graduation again this year, we will. Um, we have let our students know we will be celebrating them on June fourth. Um, on that Friday, that is their day for graduation and whatever we can do on that day within the guidelines that we have from ODE, Polk County and the Oregon Health Authority, we will work from those guidelines to build from there. Um, and we're hoping that by June with the vaccinations, numbers will be down to a space where we can bring in more than fifty. Um, I just, that's not a known yet. And so it's, it's challenging to say for sure what that's going to look like. Because there's so much out there that we don't quite know yet. And so I know it's very hard for parents to plan. Can we invite family? Can we, um, you know, I, I get that. Um, they're just going to have to be just, please be patient and know that that's the day and we will do something to honor the accomplishment of our class of twenty twenty-one. So we are telling students, we need to make sure that we're ordering caps and gowns. Um, that, you know, we, we will be celebrating their diplomas and, and doing that process like, like even if we need to do it like we did last year, we certainly can do that. Um, uh, Mr. Baldwin is kind of the lead as an administrator on working with, um, for example, usually he's our coordinator who connects with our parents who do the Grad Night Committee. Um, so if parents would like, you know, to touch base or, or get some ideas, Mr. Baldwin would be a great resource and you can always reach out to me. Um, you know, either email or a telephone call. I'm happy to answer questions or, you know, organize with parents. Um, I, I know that it is challenging as a parent of a senior. I know that our seniors want to be together socially. Right now, we're not in a space where social can happen. Um, and even if we're on campus, it's a pretty restrictive with social distancing or what we say physical distancing. Um, the cohorting that we are required as uh, through Ready School Safe Learners, we are not able to get together two hundred kids. For example, I can't, I know, I know Senior Sunrise was one of those things where people were really disappointed that we didn't run it. And it's very challenging to offer an opportunity where we really can't even invite the whole class because we're not allowed. I can't bring two hundred and fifty students onto our campus. Um, and so uh, there, there are just some challenges to being able to make it a welcoming and social event where we're not turning students away or saying, drive through, get your donut and see ya. Um, so we're trying to do as much as we can virtually right now. Um, and as we're able to bringing in more and more groups. Um, we're, we're working through identifying for Lippi. One of the challenges that we're, we're working from is um, you know, maintaining student confidentiality about why we're bringing you know, maintaining student confidentiality about why we're bringing in students and how we're bringing in students. And then also being very specific about who we are targeting and bringing in. So that's kind of a challenging thing to talk about. And I'm just going to give the example of, you know, students with special needs. If I were to say right now, we're bringing in all of our students on an IEP. As, as people see students coming to our school, that right there shares and discloses, oh, that kid's going to school, they must be on an IEP. And so we're trying to be very sensitive about how we talk about who we're bringing in. While also maintaining some, a sense of confidentiality. We are not just bringing in the entire senior class. There is a specific reason why we've targeted specific seniors. And we're reaching out in telephone calls to those parents and those students to organize, you know, the supports that those students currently need.
So I, to be clear. So if I'm hearing you correctly, that does not mean every senior will get in the building this year. Is that correct? To say that?
For, for where we currently are with Lippi, the, the students who are coming back on. We're, we're hoping, you know, by for certain February 15th, but we're hoping we can as early as next week start to bring students back. This first round of seniors is not every senior. And so we, we are contacting, if a student is in need of those supports, we're contacting those families. And they're getting phone calls. So that they're aware and they know when that starts, what the details are and where we go from there. That's just this first level, first phase. We will continue to phase in more and more groups as we're able and as those protocol are working and in place. And we have, you know, the staff that are there and, and we're able to.
Yeah, so as we reach out and make those connections with students that we want to bring back into the building. Are, are parents given time? Have we done some footwork on this? Or are we going to call them Sunday night and say, we are ready for your kid Monday morning at nine? I mean, is there any type of leeway? A lot of this, a lot of the information feels like last minute for some of the people in my zone and our district.
Let me step in for just a second here. I, I want to be clear about timelines. These are very, very difficult situations and decisions that we are making as a school district. We are doing our best to give a week, two weeks if we can, ample time. Again, building and moving and shifting those pieces. So yes, our goal is to give as much lead time as possible and continuing to, which I'll share a little bit more here next. Where the metrics are going and us continuing to see successes of what we're building and then continue to implement more. So it is, I want to be clear as the superintendent of the school district. The, it is difficult right now for us to give, on this date, we think we're going to have everything ready to go. And that's exactly where we're going to be able to share with parents. We are working very hard to do that. We have an amazing team of leaders. Ms. Servignyao being part of one of, part of that at the high school. But again, we are, we are doing our best to get information out as quickly as possible and giving enough time moving forward. So Darcy, just know that that's a, that's a hard one for any school district. Yes, we're going to give out and continue to share plans of as we phase in. But again, there are still some moving parts that we are dealing with, which I'll share again, a little bit more here when we get into, to the next section.
Thank you. That was great. And no, thanks, Donna.
Yeah, and you know, call, call or email anytime.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions before I head out?
I think we should go ahead and move on to the superintendent report. Because I think we're, you know, we're kind of crossing back and forth from the, the high school graduation topic into some of the other topics around what we're doing now at the high school level as we start with limited in-person. And I, I'm sure there's a lot of interest in the next topic. So let's go ahead and move, move into the superintendent report.
Thank you, Donna, for this evening.
Yeah, thanks, Donna.
All right, we're gonna switch here. And I know, as I always do, we're going to start with metrics. And then we'll get to some next steps and then obviously open it up for questions. And then I do have several questions that we can go through. So this is just a reminder, I have, I am tending to with all of our presentations that we're doing right now, just reminding everyone, our school community, our community at large, of the key practices we need to continue to do. Obviously, you see us tonight, even at the board meeting, we're socially distanced. We're all wearing our mask. And again, you'll see a safe social, but it's really physical distance from one another. So again, as Principal Servignyao also shared, cohorting is a big part of our conversation that we're continuing to do because students cannot intermix. Especially as we get back into the buildings, we know that we'll have additional protective equipment. You'll hear us say PPE. Again, that tends to be masks, face shields, gloves and gowns as necessary. We have a whole process for isolation and quarantining, which were, have had some practice from this past spring. And then obviously the couple, several days that we had opened for our original limited in-person. And then obviously continued cleaning, disinfecting airflow within the schools. And then the ventilation system, which we have been working on. We have a outside organization that came in and has really walked through every one of our buildings. And we are waiting for a report. What I am going to add in the ventilation part is we know one building, IES, we're in the process of purchasing HEPA filters, which is recommended by the state. So we are in the process of getting that for that elementary school. And again, we have that additional funding coming in as part of that process. Again, short-term fix for a long-term, bigger conversation we all need to have in the future. A next slide for me, please. So the next slide is, are specifically, many of you have seen this before, so I will do my best to walk through this because I know there is still some confusion about the advisory metrics. And I want to be clear, these are advisory metrics, but we, we have to take them into account as we are making decisions. So as you can see, the top part of this talks about the county case rates, and that is specifically Polk County. So we do not look at any other county except Polk County. So those county case rates are specific to Polk. So we have to look at the two-week look backs for both county case rates per 100,000 and the overall county test positivity. Red is not good. We want to be moving towards the, the green. The positive of this slide, if you look at the one, two, third column in where it says in red, forty, 408, excuse me, 481.1. That you can see, and then moving from left to right to 460.6 to 368.9. And we received new numbers today, which are 297.8. We are moving in the right direction. So we are now starting to be one cycle in the orange. Which is a positive thing for the case rates. And then again, the bottom part, which talks about Polk County test positivity. Again, third column in, we were at 10.1%. The following two weeks, 10. The last two-week look back, 7.8. And then our, just our last, we just received this this evening. Our 117 through 130 is 7.2% county test positivity. So again, in that orange-yellow area for, for those pieces. So this is a huge metric and one of the key metrics that we are, we are looking at. We are really wanting to be in the orange and the yellow consistently as we start to move into in-person learning. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about our first approach of limited in-person building, excuse me, limited in-person in building and then building upon there as we are successful. So I'm going to pause. Any questions for that site? Again, that is one slide that we have consistently used within the school district. So we are looking at two-week cycles of this, and I'll share a little bit more. So what are, what are the last two-week cycles look like? Are they going down? Are they going back up? But again, in the last three cycles, really four, really three cycles now with this new data, we are moving in the right direction from that perspective. Yes.
We have a specific criteria that says, so this last week was 7.2. If the next week is seven point, or let's say the next week is five. Are we going to open the schools up the next week and let all the kids in? Or are we going to wait for two weeks?
Yeah, we have some of that information at the end that we're going to share with you of what our approach, we have been working with Polk, you know, obviously Polk County is a guidance with us, but we have been working and looking at those pieces. So I'm going to share a little bit about that. And again, we're continuing to have those conversations. We have a meeting tomorrow morning with our building principals. We meet every Tuesday. Again, they've done a good job of, they're really getting ready to reopen at their school sites. That has really been our focus last week, but next, tomorrow, we will be continuing to lay out what our phases look like and, and some of the things based off conversations we've had this week. But good question. So the next, there, we are looking at multiple metrics because again, I think one of the things in conversations with our Polk County Health Department and just in our conversations with the Oregon Department of Education and the Ready School Safe Learners. A lot of, there's language in there, making sure that you look at your county first and foremost, the two-week look back. But you may also want to look at your specific actual zip codes of what you are, where, where you're, where you're, where you are and, and those around you to get an understanding. So this is the overall metric. So these are the total cases since COVID has started in the three areas, Dallas, Independence, Monmouth and West Salem. So you'll see in column two, that is the populations of each of the towns. And again, obviously we're combined because we are one school district. The third column in is the total cases at each of those towns that has been identified, the total cases. The next, and again, it's a little bit of a different formula. And again, you'll see down below and we will also put in the chat, there's a public on OHA's website as well as the governor's site, you can see all of these really numbers that show. So it's, it's a percentage based off of their formula. I tried to find the formula. I can't get to the backside of the document to see it. So I'm going to try and reach out to OHA to get, so we have and can share with everyone those numbers of how they get to the 2814, because it's a little bit different than the two-week look back. But it's the overall picture within each of the towns that we show. But really what I'm focused on is the last two because it's really the difference in population. So the fifth column is the difference. So Dallas is, we are 8% bigger Independence and Monmouth than Dallas. And West Salem is 32% bigger than Independence and Monmouth. I'm going to say that again. So we are 8% bigger than Dallas. And then Independence and, West Salem is 32% bigger than Independence and Monmouth. So again, we're going down. If you look at the last column on the right, so the differences in the cases. We have 38% more cases than Dallas. Yet our population is 8% difference. If you go to West Salem, there is actually no difference. And if you look at the total percentage rate, you see us now at 3891. And West Salem is 3876. So technically, we're .4, which is not statistically significant. But we are above total case rates per 100,000 than West Salem, who has 32% more population than us. So again, understand that, that, you know, there are a lot of moving parts with this. Again, it's just a data point that we are using as we look at making decisions. Next slide for me, please. And then the final metrics we're using is just, we, we are looking at the positive cases within each of the zip codes. And again, with us combined. You will see a little bit of up and down there. We did, we usually receive these data Tuesday, so I don't have anything for last week. But again, again, just another way for us to look. You can see again, we're a little bit up and down. We have conversations with the community or, excuse me, with Polk County Health about that. And just, you know, the reminders that we have to, and they continue to say, and they ask me, and I will continue to remind everybody that the, we have lots of tools that we're using to be, put ourselves as a community in a good space, right? The physical distancing, the wearing of the mask, the washing of the hands. And then I will say, which is I believe our next slide, but I'll pause before we go, because I want to ask if there's any questions about the data. The, the other tool is the vaccine, which I'll talk about more next. So any questions as it relates to this data?
Thanks for the explanation, Jennifer.
Yeah, not a problem. And again, we're looking at everything. And I think that's, the, the key piece here is both of these last two slides in com, in connection with the advisory metrics is part of that continued conversation. And please know, I continue to reach out to our health department. They're sharing things with me. They're guiding. We make the final decision in the school district, but please know, I, I do listen to what some of their concerns are within from the health department. Sorry, Dom, what were you going to say?
I was just gonna ask, do we know that rate up there or number of positive cases? That's positive test cases, right?
Correct.
Do we know what the base of that is? Do we have a rough idea of how many tests are done in Polk or in Monmouth and Independence in a week? I mean, is it 100, 1,000, a million? I don't.
So we are not a very test-heavy area. And that's some of the concern coming from the health department because we don't have consistent testing. So they have concerns at times, we are probably higher than not. But again, I'm just using the data to help make those decisions. I have, I'm asking a little bit more of those questions. We have a meeting on Wednesday. I think some of my concern, just like we do, if the N starts to get small, because I want, I'm starting to want to ask questions. What's the grade, what's the grade? Excuse me, what's the age group? Can you give me a detailed, a little bit more, even percentage-wise, maybe not the total N number? I don't know that I will get that. They have it statewide. But I would like to see a little bit of that from our, really the town, from each of our zip codes that we are in. So that's some of my next data to look at in those conversations.
And I guess I'll take this opportunity to make just a general comment about the data is that as we try and look at finer and finer data, it gets funnier and funnier. And I think we, we need to make sure we remember to step back and look at the data in total. Look at the studies, some of which have been referenced tonight by our parents that show that kind of independent of where the data is, one of the safest places that kids can be is in school. We talk about, you know, what are the, the mediating factors and their distancing and masks and, and hand washing and all those things. The places where that happens the most is in school. If you watch the kids out on the streets, they're not doing any of that stuff. And so, you know, I think we need to take the data into account. But we also need to realize that sort of no matter what the data is, we might be doing our kids a favor by getting them into the classroom.
Other questions or comments? As it relates to the data before I go forward. Okay, next slide for me, please, Emily. So on a positive note. Again, I think what's exciting is last week, again, another tool in the toolbox, as I say. We started Vaccines for All Educators. So that started on Wednesday, the 27th. Again, I want to, we are the third-best county in the state for vaccines. Although I do believe that we will be getting limited vaccines coming forth after this week, just based off of conversations I've been in with different people. I do want to give a public, just thank you and kudos to the Polk County Health Department, West Valley Hospital and Salem Health for their continued collaboration with all of us in Polk County. That's including all the superintendents and several charter schools in making this happen very quickly for us at the K-12 level. So we, we were able to, we weren't sure that we would be able to open up to all K-12 educators. Late Wednesday, I got the okay to open that up. And so we were able to open up to any educator that do, did want to start that process last week. And we'll continue that. They started today and Wednesday and Friday, they'll go until the vaccines run out. We did also get approval, our second or our last group. We are, want that process to begin with is student teachers, tutors, subs and coaches. So anybody that's not, quote, a school district employee could move forward. So we shared information out with all of them to start that vaccine process at well, as well. The second rounds of vaccines will begin with, for our staff, the week of February 24th. So during that week and the following week will be when that second stage will happen. So questions about the vaccine? Again, still, people still moving forward with it, but we're excited to have it moving. Jerry?
Are most of the teachers now, have they received their first round of vaccination, the first shot?
Everyone had access to it, yes.
Okay, so that means that they can start opening the school because the teachers at least have been vaccinated?
So it's a two, it's a two-step process. What we are working on with our staff is that, and I want to be clear, our buildings are safe, safe to start bringing them back in. And we're working with both unions to make sure that we have clear protocols and understanding. We do have staff already back in the building. We have staff that are coming in to help with limited in-person. We're continuing to have conversations with both unions of concerns that are brought up. We do that at meet and confer. We do that at, you know, if we are negotiating, because there's times, there's a difference between just conversations and sitting and negotiating workplace concerns or issues that have come up. And so that's a continued process that we're working with them. Again, I want to, you know, we are wanting staff to come back in. It is safe. We are encouraging them to come back in. We know that there are staff that may have mitigating circumstances that we're going to continue to work through with them in those scenarios. But again, that is the process that we're moving towards with them and continuing to try and share that our buildings are safe. We have good protocols that they're welcome to come back into the buildings and continuing to work with them to move in that direction.
Can they be meeting with the students after the first shot, or they have to wait until the second shot?
Yeah, it's a combination. I think we're, we're, we're working with staff to get them in. Again, if staff that are ready. That is one of the first steps. We're, we're wanting to move forward with them. Again, there are a lot of moving parts still. Again, metrics are still high, so we're, I'm trying to work collaboratively with the unions so we can continue to move forward. You know, everybody thinks this is an easy answer, and it's not. Again, we're, 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 they're part of our leadership team. They're, we're working together to bring them in. But again, there's, there's still some things that they have concerns about, and I have to listen to that and address it and address it with our administrative team. I think we have a great collaborative conversation with union leadership. However, I'll be very honest, there, there are very difficult conversations at times. I have great trust in our teachers and our classified staff that will get there, and we are continuing to have pretty robust conversations. So they know that it's comfortable and safe to be in the schools. So it's, it's not an easy, just a, hey, we're going to do this and it's going to go that way. We are in constant conversation, making sure that the environments are safe for them to, to return.
Teachers got vaccinated?
I do have that. That's not something we're going to publicly share.
So let me rephrase the question. Did the majority of the teachers get-
I'm not going to answer that either right now. Sorry, Don.
Okay.
That, again, that, when we are talking about, they are not, so again, there is no law requiring staff or students to be vaccinated. I, I am collecting data to help Polk County because the vaccine pieces. You know, again, we have that information. There are two of us only in the district that see it. I, I'm encouraged by the numbers, is what I'm going to say. That's about what I want to say right now with, with the information that's come in. You'll take that?
I'll take that.
Often in the building, by the date that we've proposed for limited in-person, February 16th, that's, that's something we're continuing to evaluate, but I don't think it's an issue at this point in time. Is that correct?
Correct. We have staff that are, that are already in buildings and willing to come in. We're, we're still working through some of those pieces, but-
So our, our teachers, our staff, that's not an issue. The, the vaccinations and getting through the vaccinations will help us feel more comfortable with getting to a full hybrid model. But what we're working on right now, that's, that's not a constraint. We are working towards limited in-person by the middle of February.
And then, and then continuing to build from that. Which we're, which is going to be our next slide, so go ahead with for me, Emily. But then go ahead, Darcy, please.
So with regards to the statement that you just made, Steve, that it's not a problem of teachers wanting to get back in buildings. It's more so of, I just want to clarify. It's more so that the vaccines that we're waiting on, I mean, will, do we know that we actually have the amount of teachers prepared to get into the buildings? Or are they the teachers? Or are we filling their, their seats with subs or short-term, you know, employment or temporary positions? Are we talking our, all of our teachers that we need to come in to support our students will actually be in those teachers?
So it's going to be a combination with, of that. So it is a combination of licensed staff and potentially classified. Again, I want to remind everybody, this is a short two hours. This is really going to be focusing on really to start getting students back connected and back into the environment. I'm going to share a little bit more of some of those groups. Donna shared a little bit. We know that the high school, it's going to be seniors who may need some additional supports. But again, we are, we are meeting staff where they're at and continuing to share that it is a safe environment to come into. We are working still through that process of the vaccine, which is a, another tool to make staff feel comfortable coming back into the building. So again, the, many of us, so I, I use the district office. We have, there have been at times 15 of us in here working. We are social distanced. We do not have contact with each other for more than 15 minutes at a time. We have protocols. Again, I'll, as I've shared, I go to the restroom. I hand sanitize. I use the restroom. I wash my hands. I hand sanitize again, and I go back into my office. We are doing more this week. This past week was the first time our administrative team met in-person. We meet in-person tomorrow in this room and have continued to move in that direction because numbers are dropping, which allows us to do that. That's partly why we are in, what I'm going to say, a hybrid model of the board meeting tonight, being able to move that.
If we have staff that have only had one vaccination, and they're saying, I don't feel safe coming to the building yet, then we're going to make accommodations for that. And that's what we're figuring out right now. So we may be bringing in substitutes for backfilling where we need to. And that's, all of that detailed planning is exactly where we're at right now. And that's, you can imagine with the combination of the vaccines, the the willingness to come in for some and not others. It's a complex formula that they're working through at each building. So-
And I would also add to that, we, we are, and as I shared in the board report, but again, I don't have much more than that. We have received additional, what we're calling S R 2 money. Based off of that information we've received over the last couple of weeks. This past week, we have posted open positions for IA twos and threes, because we know from a supervision standpoint, again, that we're going to need them. This additional money helps us to be able to open that up so that we feel that we have enough staff to be able to cover. I am working side by side with Western Oregon University of working with their student teachers. We have many student teachers in our buildings. If they can apply for an IA job and be part of that, plus they get to student teach and be teachers, or if a teacher's gone, I have somebody that has a background in it. We are, we are building this model to be prepared for everything, even when our staff gets back in, because I want to be clear. And we've made this very clear to our staff, and we will continue to share with the community. If you are sick, you need to stay home. That is a huge part of, of helping to move forward from this, from the, you know, from COVID. So you're going to hear me say that over and over, and I know some people get frustrated with me because I sound like a broken record. I do that purposefully because I want to make sure what we're communicating is for the important pieces that we're asking everyone to do, that that, that is clear. And so we know that we're going to need additional subs, although CISA said we've saved on sub money, which we will. We know we're going to need them through the rest of the spring, as well as additional staffing moving forward. So that is part of the, the piece that we're trying to plan and build in now that we have additional funding.
Jan, did you have a question?
Yeah, I do have a question. And I, I know that Jen wants to go on with her report, and I wanted to, but I've been curious from the beginning of this, this two-hour thing. Why are we, why did we choose a two-hour increment of time? And also, are we going to do multiple two-hour increments during the day? So it's two, two completely different questions, but I'm very curious, where did this two-hour concept ever come from?
So it is the, the, there, there are two processes we can have. And again, where we are in the advisory metrics, we can have limited in-person. And we had some limited in-person going, and our goal was to build up before the shutdown happened in November. Comes from the Oregon Department of Ed, yes. It's, there is, it is a-
State of Oregon, that is the answer.
Tied to the Ready School Safe Learners. So it is a-
Does anybody know the science behind a, just a two-hour window? That just, it just makes no sense to me that it has to be limited to just two hours, or whether a kid could go, I'm thinking of the high school level now, because everybody that teaches at the high school is a specialist. So does a kid go for two hours to Language Arts and then his second or her second cohort of the day go to Science?
So, so here's what I'll tell you. Everybody keeps putting everything in the box that we know. I'm asking everybody to think outside the box. We're looking at things of, do we offer things at the high school in the evening because kids are working? We're looking at things of, okay, we want to keep core instruction with elementary in the morning. So do we do the two hours in the afternoon where we can teach routines to students, where we can get them in and getting them used to school for a couple hours? And so as we continue to build and roll forward and phase in, you know, having all grade levels in at this, at this, at some point. And then hopefully getting to a point where the numbers are steady, where we could roll into more time. That is the continued conversation that we are having. Everyone asked, do we have a hybrid time? We did. But the, I want to be clear. The guidance has changed at least seven times. At least seven times. We have built and torn down, and built and torn down, and built and torn down. My goal, our goal, and really with our leadership within the buildings, our leadership with our unions, is that we, once we get open, we want to continue to grow that and stay open. I'm going to say that again. Once we get open, we want to continue to grow it and stay open. If we go too fast and metrics go up, I will have to bring everything down. I am listening to superintendents that have been in and out, in and out. They're losing staff. I will not do that. We have amazing staff in this school district. We have amazing families in this school district. We are trying to listen to all the voice, and I'm going to say I right now. I, as a superintendent, am listening to all the voices. We have parents that want us to open everything up. I get as many emails that tell me, don't you dare. We have, and, and I have to listen to all those voices. I'm listening to the voices of our staff. I'm listening to students. I'm listening to you all. I'm listening to our administrative team. And we really are trying to build a model where once we open, even though it's two hours, we add in another group added to the, and they're in the two hours. And we add another group, and they're in another two hours. And we add another group, and they're another, they're in another, they're in two hours. And we may get to the point that K-5 is completely in certain groups for two hours. And then our next step is we roll to more hours. Because hopefully by that point, we would be able to have good numbers and being able to move into that true hybrid model. And again, I'm saying, I'm starting specifically K-5 because that's what we have been communicating. That's what was shared. Our principals have been gathering that data. That's some of our next steps that we're going to continue to build into. But again, you're seeing, as we shared on Friday, our seniors, we're pulling them in. Perry, Perry is working on, the middle school is working on some things, which again, I'm going to show you a little bit, at least what the first phase is, and then sort of talk through what our final pieces are. So I apologize if I sound aggressive. I do not mean to. I, my heart and soul, I see what students are suffering. I see what our staff is suffering. They miss kids. But my job, and I know all of you here get tired of me saying this, my job is the safety and security of this school district first and foremost. And then obviously, the academic, social, emotional, and behavioral learning of, of, of our students and staff second. And again, not very far apart, but that is really what I am trying to focus on. And doing it in a way that we can stay open once we start and build.
Sorry. So it really doesn't look like hybrid is, we kind of have, I don't know, buried hybrid for a little bit. And I mean, we're still working on it, but it's taken the back burner to the Lippi.
Because- Again, I think if, as we build limited in-person and depending on where the metrics go, then yes, we may be able to at some point, you know, in the next whatever time, I would love to say month, month and a half. That potentially could be, could be, Darcy, yes. But again, I'm, I'm very careful in that that is our goal of trying to get the limited in-person going, continue to watch the, the metrics. Again, we have had some conversations and want, have some really good thoughts and have had some key conversations with the health department of how and what our steps are moving towards. Which again, we believe, we have that, we're having that conversation tomorrow. We continue to share that information with our unions. We have a meeting to continue to talk about hybrid moving forward with our union leadership as an example.
I'd like to address Darcy's question. You, you made it sound like we're not striving for a hybrid model. And, and I would say that's not true. We are. We're starting with limited in-person. Up until the metrics that we saw just a few minutes ago, that was really the advisory guideline, so that's what we should be doing.
I didn't-
We are trying to do both, is where I was going with that. We're doing both. We're starting limited in-person. We're doing that planning with the goal to ramp the hy, hybrid as the metrics improve and as the vaccines get completed. So-
That's the goal.
It's both.
That, I did not, that's not what I meant by what I was saying. I just, I guess I'm also kind of taking into account the, you know, the people that I hear from. It's just, you know, we wouldn't, we really shouldn't be looking at, like, why aren't we in hybrid right now? Because we can't be in hybrid right now. It's, we're working up to that with using Lippi, so.
And, and if you look at the metrics, technically, we are now just in the orange where we can be phasing into some onsite or hybrid, which it says that. But again, I, we have, in our county, have been up and down. I'm very happy with the last three two-week look backs, that we are going in that direction. So I, again, I am hoping that that continues. And then, Darcy, yes, our goal is to, as that metric continues to drop, and looking again, in conversations with the health department in some of the, you know, when is a good spot? I've, I've been, as you all know, there's some, from a board perspective, some liability issues. I've had to have conversations with our legal counsel. And, you know, we have a, a good idea of when that might work, but I, again, I want to have that continued conversation with our principals as they're building and moving forward in that direction. So we, that's our goal, to get there.
I'm sorry to ask another question, but I'm getting a text responding to part of that and part of my, this is another part of it with regards to, sorry, I'm trying to read this. If, I'm curious because of, so the statement that I just got is if we bring students outside the metrics into the buildings, we lose our liability protection?
There's a potential.
Okay, but if we're, is that actually accurate? Or is it, I thought it had to do with House bill, the House bill is what allows us to keep the protection as long as we follow-
The metrics.
The metrics and our safety protocols we've put in place.
Correct. So if I choose to go hybrid right now, technically, I would not be following the advisory metrics.
Okay. I, okay. Thank you.
Yep. So let's talk a little bit of definition for limited in-person. So what this looks like, these are cohorts of groups limited to no more than 20 students in a given cohort. So that's what we're working towards. We have different group sizes that are starting at the elementary and the middle school and the high school as they continue to build. But those groups can be, the cohort itself can be no more than 20 in a location. Students can't be part of more than two cohorts in any given week. So they can have two groups, but no more than that as we start in this avenue. And then a single student or, or a student cohort of any size can spend And then a single student or, uh, or a student cohort of any size can spend, um. Only two consecutive hours. And Jan, that's where that comes from. That is the direct guidance out of the Ready School Safe Learners. As you go into limited in person. So we have two consecutive hours to have them. It cannot be intermittent in that, uh, process. Um, this is in conjunction with the comprehensive distance learning and truly that is because it's tied to the metrics where metrics would be high. So they're giving us some flexibility to bring students in. And then we have to be careful because a staff member, uh, even a staff member in multiple roles as an instructional assistant. They cannot interact with more than three cohorts in a given day. So up to sixty students or five in a week. A hundred and a hundred is a, a base where we're looking at even when we get into a cohort, cohorting at the hybrid level. Um, and again, this is based on identified needs, uh, subject to specific limitations, which I shared above. So again, small groups. No more than two cohorts. So if Steve and I are in a group together, we can be in another cohort, but that's it. Um, and then again, two consecutive hours, uh, to get them into the classroom.
Could you try flipping this around and put it in the context of a parent of a first grader?
Sure. So, uh, I'm a first grader at Ash Creek. In the morning, I will do my morning meeting. Followed by my academic instruction. Uh, I'll have lunch. I'll potentially, my parent will either drop me off. I'll walk to school or I'll jump on the bus. I'll come to the school. Um, I'll jump into my cohort. We may be doing some. Uh, social skills like going to, walking to the restroom or maybe doing. Going to the lunchroom to see what it looks like, getting them used to school, which is usually what we do the first two months of our, within the buildings. During that time also, they're gonna continue to work on, uh, small groups intervention. Probably specifically reading because we know that that's the number one thing we need to get students going with. Uh, but then again, that time would be both probably getting them routines in the building, in the classroom. As well as some academic intervention and then getting on a bus and then come, coming home or walking home or having a parent pick them up.
In two hours.
Correct. Correct. So, so again, this is what our principals are doing, right? They're. They're honing their systems of how quickly do we get them in because there's also entry, entry processes. They have to ask questions. If a student doesn't feel well, then that student gets moved to the isolation room. We have a process for that. If that takes place, then the rest of the students go into their classroom or space. Um, where they have six feet, again, physically distance. They have their masks on. Uh, again, they're gonna be learning the environment in the school, whether it be in the classroom. Or going to the restroom or, um, different things as well as some academic pieces, which again. That is our normal processes that when we start school, usually in the school year, it's a combination of both of those.
Can I ask a question?
Sorry, go ahead.
Uh, yes, Jan.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, I lost you for just a little bit there. Somehow I lost reception. Did I understand it that the, if we just take, I was making a second grader. They're gonna come to school for two hours in the morning, then go home and then come back?
No, 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 no. No, they will be online in comprehensive distance learning in the morning. So they, they jump online. Do their instruction in the morning online, then they would move in the afternoon for two hours into the buildings.
Okay, thank you.
Or, or vice versa, because we do have some students that are, we're actually bringing in in the morning.
Right. It's just, when I lost you there, I thought for a minute we were sending kids home. And then bringing them back. And I, I, I knew I couldn't have heard that correctly.
Thanks, Jan, for the clarification. Uh, Dahl, what were you just saying?
Question was that.
Yes.
Temperature gauge.
So temperature's not part of that. Uh, there's some questions that we'll ask. Um, there's also a process that even while they're in the classroom. Um, you know, teachers, if you hear coughing or different things, then we'll, then we'll have to work through. Uh, that process of, of moving kids to the isolation room. Um, and then calling parents. And again, I, I, I'm gonna sound like a broker record and I apologize for that, but. We did, if your son or daughter is sick, your student is sick, they cannot come to school. Um, that is, that is one of the things. We're gonna screen on the bus. How are you feeling? So we have different pieces we're already, uh, building and putting into place. So. They'll get screened on the bus or if they come as a walker or as a, a drop off, they'll get screened, screened coming into the building. You know, teachers will monitor students. Um, within the classroom during that time, if they do need to isolate, if student doesn't feel well. Um, all of those pieces. And again, you know, we, we did it two days out here and we learned a lot and, and. I think that principals, especially the, the elementaries, which is probably the hardest group. Uh, secondary won't be as hard because they're older. Um, and, and a little bit of different process, probably faster than what we will do with, uh, elementaries just because. They know technology and can quickly fill out things on their phones or on a computer. Right, but there are seven different things we have to look for. Cough, you know. Sneeze, uh, stomach ache, you know, just, so there's a, there's a mirage of, of, uh. Pieces that will have to, you know, are you hot? Have you been cold? Um, that, that is part of that process.
On my first grader example, so if you're a parent here in the community and you're hearing us talk about this. We're trying to start limited in person in the middle of February. Should I expect my child to be? Invited back for a two hour slot? Five days a week, four days a week, one day a week?
So, uh, that's, that is that, our goal is we want to be four days a week. Um.
All students?
That is our goal to, and I'm gonna talk K five right now. I'm gonna just talk K five. What, um, many families have received phone calls from us. And part of the reason we were doing that is our, that was our goal to build into that. Uh, we want to start with this small group, which is what we had originally started our limited in person plan with. So. You know, as we phased this in, in, at the elementary level, again, it's. First group going who have had, and again, I'm gonna, Emily, you wanna, if you wanna go to the next slide for me, just so we have it up. Um, we're really looking at that K eight level and. Just students with significant absences or the students that have been most impacted and then those that don't have internet. And then our goal, this is phase one. And then again, as we build this, then our next. Especially at the elementary, as we've shared before and as communicated out with parents, then our next group, if we are successful with this. And work out some kinks because again, we know that we're solid, but until you do it consistently. I'm sure that there are pieces that we're gonna learn from as we do and everything that we do. And then moving K N and then successful, moving one in. And, and I want to be clear. To parents, if you don't feel comfortable coming into schools, you do not have to. We will continue. And we are required to continue a comprehensive distance learning because I also know that there is as much. Concern of us forcing kids back in, which is not what we will do. We are trying to meet everyone. As best as possible in the concerns and, and what they are wanting. Uh, for students, uh, as we go back into the building. So that would be Steve at the elementary level. Uh, Perry and Donna are continuing to, uh, share, share what their visioning is after that. Again, um, we're looking at different academic pieces. And again, those are some of the conversations we're continuing tomorrow because really. The focus has been from the governor, very clear, K five. And so that's really what we have been focusing on now. We have a little bit more flexibility, I see it, than we did before. So we are reaching out and doing some six twelve. Um, which, to be very honest, I didn't think that we would be able to do. And so the fact that we're even doing some potential limited in person. At both of those levels is, is a success for me, um, from where we have started.
One more question. Um. Maybe you, you addressed it at the, the last workshop that I wasn't able to get to. But have we done a survey as far as? Uh, to parents, you know, do you want your kid to come to school or do you want to continue, um?
Hybrid? In person or, or hybrid?
So, you know, if we, if we have that kind of an idea. Um, I mean, I think that could give us a whole lot more, more, um. More of a, an idea of, okay, so. We're gonna have thirty-four, thirty-four feet in this class because there's only gonna be eight kids here. And, you know, these other eight kids want to stay home. So, I mean, do we have that idea?
We do for K five because that really has been our focus. So they have reached out. Uh, again, they still had at our last, um, community committee meeting. We gave a snapshot to the community and, and we were about sixty, forty. Now, some of that was. Not sure, some were no, some were not sure's and some were still undecided. So our principals are still. Uh, gathering that and will continue to. We have not done that, uh, six twelve. We'll continue that, to talk through that. Um, but again, I, the focus has originally been on K five. Um, and getting you, um, that, they have some of the lowest percentages when you look at actually of, of youth getting COVID. Uh, they're the lowest. The zero to nine year olds are like one point, I think it's one point seven percent. So that has been. Continues to be our initial focus. And then again, as we can build in where we feel appropriate. Um, you know, six through twelve. A- and again, continuing to work with our unions, right? I want, we have good relationships. We are having really hard conversations. Uh, in a positive way. I, um, I'm thankful that they're continuing to work with me. Um, and I have great trust that we're gonna get there. Um, especially now that the, what I call the vaccine tool, another tool in our toolbox has started. Uh, I see that, I, I don't know which order, so I saw Ce's had her hand in Darcy. So I'm gonna let Ce's go and then Darcy, I'll view next, please.
I, I just want to add, um, Vidal, we have not sent out a survey. So parents may say, well, no one's contacted me. Our schools have been calling family individually. And they actually, when they call and they've started with, you know, starting with K and moving up. Because that has been the priority we've been given. So they've actually been making phone calls and in each of those phone calls. They, they asked not only if students are interested in. Come back into classrooms, but what their transportation needs are and things like that. So it's been a really extensive process. But if anyone in the community says, I didn't get a survey, um, then. Know that they, schools are calling and they're working on it. Um, and if they want to call their principal to find out if they've missed out, they are welcome to do so. But at this point. It, it's not like there's been a big survey everybody's missed.
Thanks, Ce's. Darcy?
My was, my question was just that, if I'm a parent and I have three kids in elementary school. At various grade levels, or how are we, maybe I'm assuming that's been thought of. How does that work?
Darcy, that's a great question. We, that was probably one of our biggest barriers. With clarification from the last released Ready School Safe Learners. So we. We had been told that the busing was a cohort. It is no longer considered a cohort. So we have a little bit more flexibility because that conversation right there, Darcy, we were. It was like a puzzle of a thousand pieces where the actual puzzle is all blue.
Yeah.
It, it, I mean, because we were having to think through, okay. Can we, can we build buses based off of families and that's enough time to come in? That has gone away a little bit, so it gives us a little bit more flexibility in routing flexibility. To meet and do that building in per grade level.
Thank you so much.
She's correct me if I'm wrong with that because I know that that has, has helped immensely on the transportation side.
That, that is absolutely correct because before really training to keep them in limited was a problem. We still. Students are still limited in the number of other people they can be exposed to during the day. Um, but it's much easier in transportation. We're still limited in transportation. We still can't cram a bunch of kids. Together on a bus. Um, but it is much better and parents will be told. If you require busing for your student, um, we have to drive with the windows open, for example. So there's all kinds of other restrictions, but at least we can combine. More kids on a bus and then send them off into different cohorts within the building, um, within the guidelines.
Case, in, in that case, you would, we would try to accommodate that family so that those kids were all in the same. Time slot, like an afternoon?
Well, right now, at least for K five, we're trying to put everybody in that afternoon time slot. Really, our goal is to try and get us. I want to have functioning buildings. With, in a socially, in a physically distanced way where we are running limited in person with K five kids in buildings.
In the afternoon.
In the afternoon. And again, we're slowly gonna build into that because we think it is possible. Um, I don't want to talk about next year yet because I think we're still a long ways away, but no, because I know there's questions about. You know, what are you guys doing this summer? We're already looking at, how do we run a very robust summer program? I'm not gonna only say this year for the next three to five years. We know the amount of, of, um, gaps we're potentially going to because. Uh, what some of those parents have said is correct. We are not getting to the no- normal standards that we do. We're getting to the ones that we think are the most significant to keep students learning, moving forward. Again, knowing that for the next three to five years, we will be filling those gaps as we move back into at some point. Um. What, well, I, I don't know because it's gonna be different. There are some students that are being very successful in the virtual learning. So that is going to be part of our conversation moving forward. So.
So here's a wild question.
Earlier, um, yesterday. Uh, they asked if, um. If there was any, any plans on us extending the school year through June, if that's the case. If we're able to get, um. In person or, or L I P I or, or hybrid or whatever. Um, are we gonna be able, or, or would we be thinking about even going through June? As far as the school year goes.
Again, I think those are, those are some next steps, conversations that we are needing to begin. Um, we know that that, I'll tell you right there, if it's an extended year, that's negotiated with both unions. Because that's extended past what our contract agreements are. Right, which again, we, we're more than willing to continue those, those conversations. But I would also say. Outside of that, we have already acknowledged as an administrative team. And will continue to work with our staff of, we know we're gonna have to do some sort of extended summer school or summer type of programming. And again, that is going to be, I've said to Ce's, regardless of what our cuts are, if we end up having cuts. Summer school will be a, a place where we will need to build a very robust K twelve. Um, so we can have that, uh, so we can pull, you know, get the gaps, capture the gaps.
Okay.
So that's again, part of that continued conversation. Uh, Emily, can you just go to the next slide so I can just show sort of where we're at? I just want to show steps, what we're continuing to do. Um, again, obviously we're continuing to meet with our Polk County collaboratives, which is helping. Uh, both in testing and vaccine and other, other pieces that are continuing to come up for the, from a public health. Obviously, we're having a meeting tonight. With the board. Uh, we are continuing our vaccination process, which obviously began last Wednesday and that will go through March because there's, there's some. Processes, once you have the second shot, the, um, it's a two week really for where you completely. Uh, ready to go. And then we, we are and will continue to work and transition to onsite operations within the buildings. Again, February through March, uh, in con- continued conversations with our. Uh, union leaders and within the school district and again, meeting staff where they're at. We have staff already coming in. I think as we continue to show, uh, that, this in a positive way. We will hopefully have more that will continue to, uh, come, come through the doors and, and, um. Just appreciative of everything that they are doing as a staff, uh, right now. I mean, I can't tell you, I, I sat here as Jesse did that presentation for Ash Creek. That is great instructional learning and that is what's happening at all buildings. It may not be exactly what it looks like previously. But there are good things happening within our buildings. Uh, and then as I said, we're beginning limited in person. We actually believe, and there was, there were letters that went out. Uh, to a small group of our K fives for starting next Monday. And then the high school will be honored before the sixteenth with, uh, seniors again, in need of credit recovery, but they're looking at a handful of things. And then February second, twenty-second for that six through eight group. Um, again, looking at the attendance and internet issues as a starting point. We'll continue to monitor the case and test positivity because again, that's just part of the, as we build out. And then obviously the continued training and professional development with our staff is part of these, these next steps. And. Like I said, we have a meeting tomorrow morning with our principals to continue this work. Um, as we move into, uh, next. as we move into next semester. One last thing that's not on here, and I'm, it's been brought up a couple of times, so I want to address it. So I have a meeting tomorrow with Jason Clark. Jason Clark has already been in conversation with Principal Servigna and Ryan O'Malley, the athletic director at the high school. There was a change in the governor with a really opening of gyms. And part of that athletics is tied into that, they can now be indoors and have, as, as you heard one of our parents state, you know, within the five hundred feet, small groups, I think it's no more than six, six in each group. So we're having, Jason is bringing me up to speed tomorrow. I believe we're going to continue to move forward that and start the implementation of that as well. So again, he and I have not, again, board meeting today, so I did not have, have my calendar gets blocked out on these days. So I did not have a chance to, to meet with him, but we do have a meeting to, tomorrow morning.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Um, I am continuing to get this question, and maybe a good question to ask tomorrow for him would be that, I know, I think the athletic director has kind of allowed, or the coaches push out the informations to the different sports teams, baseball, football, basketball, volleyball, whatever the sport is.
Yep.
What I'm hearing is that not all players are getting info from their head coaches. So a consistency issue, as well as the question of if certain coaches are doing central sports, so our head coaches are having central sports practices in other areas and different gyms. But for example, that gym is being used by four other schools and tournaments, et cetera. Does, does that somehow make, because they are, they're employed, they have a contract for sports that are coaches? Are we somehow held liable if something happens with that group of children? Because the coach is someone we, I'm not sure if all coaches' positions are paid, so I don't know the right language, but is, is that something we need to worry?
Yes, Darcy, if they're, if they're using the Central High School name to potentially get into those facilities, yes, there could be liability concerns tied to, back to us, yes. So I will, I will reach out to you to get some further information and as I talk with Jason tomorrow.
Thanks.
Yep.
One thought I had on these next steps, which I think are good, that I think the, the real challenge is going to be the communication with the parents, probably at the building level.
Correct.
Because it's going to be a little bit different, you know. I, I think we should be thinking about information sessions, some, some way of expediting that connection to the parents and.
Yeah, so it's, and I appreciate that because at the community meeting on last Wednesday, we talked about communication and it was clearly stated to us, Jen, we love the district message, but all this now needs to come from the buildings. And I said, not a problem, we will help them and continue to have them, you know, reach that way. So combination, right, we're, we're still going to do some messaging out from us, but Steve, that was also a comment from our parents and our, part of our community committee as well.
The, the real, the real tricky part of this for parents is going to be knowing when your kids are starting, what the scheduling is, having enough advance notice to, to be able to adapt to that. And that's going to have to come at the building level.
Yep, and the three elementaries are working ver- very closely together, so.
Okay.
I'm just, again, one of the things, the questions that I think I'm just going through were, if, what I answered, because there were a handful of questions that we received. I know Donna addressed graduation. You know, if, if there are children that are have, that families or a parent has concerns from a mental health, you know, again, re- please reach out to the building, we do have our mental health counselors, we can also get you connected on the family. If there truly are concerns and I, and you, you what, don't want to wait, there is a, if you go on to the parent link on our website, right at the top, there's a community resource, there is a emergency number. If there's a concern or a hotline, if there is true mental health concerns that are immediate. There's also hotlines to our Polk County Behavioral Health, who are there twenty-four hours a day. So please reach out, if there are concerns, to please reach out to your buildings. Buildings are being very intentional and knowing where, and where, when commu- families are communicating with them to try and support students that may truly be struggling mentally or socially, emotionally. So I know the buildings have worked extremely hard with their Polk County mental health providers that we have in the buildings to support in that way.
Jennifer, I was curious, I, this might come up, but I think that maybe we need to think about addressing how we're going to handle sped I E P kids, five oh four kids.
Yes, we.
Accommodations have been met in different ways and some are not from families. And like I can say, as a parent, have not been met at times for myself. But how are we going to work with that?
Yeah, so again, we're continuing, obviously, any time we're looking at, and I, and I want to be clear, if we're, if we're making a change in placement or a change in programming, obviously, there's a process that's followed with that. I know staff, as we are talking through students specifically, if there is a student experiencing disability that may fall into that, one of those groups, those conversations are taking place of what that might look like, what those accommodations might look like. So, Darcy, that's all a part of this, these continued conversations, moving, moving forward. And I'm just, Director Howman just sent me a text that said, please make sure that you are speaking to your case managers. Because that's the first step. Especially if you're feeling that your I E P is not being met. And then again, if, from your case manager to your building administrator, and if necessary to her.
And then next step, what would that look like if a parent feels like that's not working for them?
From the case manager's perspective, then would be to the building administrator, and then next would be to our district office.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And then my only last thing for my report is, we do have a new, I added a policy in here. Obviously, our board elections needed to be updated. So you're going to see the change under the reelection for board positions, that the dates have been updated for zones one, three, five, and seven to twenty twenty-three. So that is it.
Okay.
Unless there are other questions?
Any other questions?
I have one that I don't think anybody has an answer to. But I, I took notes, as I'm sure everybody did, on the questions from the parents today. And I think by and large, you know, most of the stuff that they addressed is either got answered or they can call their principal and, and get specific answers. But one of the parents said that the vast majority of students aren't doing well. And that's not the first time I've heard that, like the rest of you, I get a lot of emails. And I, I wonder what kind of data do we have that would tell us a, a database information on how many of our kids are really doing well? Because I hear people say also, my kid is thriving. And how many aren't doing well? Do we have any, any metrics that would tell us essentially how kids are doing? And I'm talking now specifically academics, I'm not talking about the social emotional issues, but just plain academics.
That's a data point of one.
So Jan, I think a couple of things, we have conferences coming up for end of semester. So you're going to have teachers sharing with, with their parents or families, you know, where the students are being successful and where those growth areas may still be. You know, again, I think that they are doing amazing work with students and continuing to reach out to, you know, see where students are struggling, they know academically where they're struggling. I think Ash Creek's example that they shared today is similar to what, to what many of the buildings are doing. I see data from Donna, Donna, the, the principal at the high school where, you know, she says, hey, I'm just sharing with you. This is going into our department head meetings and then going to our sta-, you know, sharing in our staff meetings. Perry with the same thing. So again, on the academic end, I wa- I want to be clear, we are not going as fast as we would normally do if we were in regular in person. And we understand that, and we have been very intentional in the planning through the summer and even as we adjust in the buildings this year of focusing on the key standards or what we call essential standards that students need. Again, speaking, listening, reading, writing. Those are some of the key pieces that we are trying to academically, because to be very honest, reading has been, i- is our focus. Because we know if students can read, then we will be able to catch them up in math, in science, in history. So Jan, yes, are we going at the pace we normally do? No, we are not. Have we been intentional to narrow, to try and make sure kids have their essential standards to move them from grade to grade from a reading perspective? Absolutely, but again, still work in progress. These are unique times, which I feel our staff has been doing amazing work. And I know it still can be frustrating for families, as much as it is frustrating for our educators across the school district.
Can I add something to that?
Something to that. So as far as, can you hear me?
Yeah.
My, like I said, my son's doing pretty well academically and, and the social part. He's got a lot of his friends that, that aren't doing so well academically, but they're doing fine, you know, socio-emotional. But a lot of it is their parents have no idea that they're, you know, that there was emails that they could get to shows, you know, well, this, this assignment is late, this assignment is late, this assignment is incomplete. I think that after, after the conferences, you know, there's going to be a lot of light shed on that. So I, I, I think that there's going to be a huge shift in, in academics in the next, I guess, semester. Just as far as, because parents are going to, you know, know more and, and be more educated on what they're, how to keep track of their kids' things. So I'm excited to see growth next, next semester.
And, and I, and I want to add to that, we know that the information overload for everyone from emails, right? Of, if you're a secondary, especially if you're a secondary, I mean, there could be several emails you're getting as a parent or as the student. So we know that, you know, office hours, they're trying to just come up with different engagement. I know Principal Servigna was having a conversation about strategies of engagement with students and what's working. I mean, they are, they are constantly trying to find ways to better their, their trade, which every good educator does. We're, we're constantly trying to reach and learn in those perspectives, so. This work is hard and I, I, we know that. And I think that we have amazing staff that are trying to do amazing things and will continue to move forward and continue to work with families, we know that that's a huge part of our job. Not always do we do that in the best way, but we are doing our best to try and make that better for every family within our school district.
I absolutely understand that and I support it, and the teachers know that I adore them, or at least I hope they know that. But essentially, the answer to the question, I think, would be that we have qualitative data. We have an enormous amount of tremendous effort and goodwill. But we, we don't really have any beyond, well, Vidal's point is well taken, conferences are coming up. But we've had more than one conference this year is, we, we have qualitative data, we don't really have quantitative data. And most likely, that, that's, that would be almost impossible to achieve. But I, I was just curious as to whether or not we had any strong evidence, one way or another, about how well kids are doing. And the answer is apparently yes and no.
It's a good statement, Jan.
And we should give that some thought, just attendance data comes to mind.
Yeah.
End of semester grades comes to mind.
We do have that, yep.
By next meeting, there probably are some data points that we could take a look at. Okay, well, thank you Superintendent. That moves us to our board report. I don't have anything, we have the P L C in here for the sixteenth of this month. I don't know if we're going to need that or not. It's a Tuesday evening, af-, yeah.
So I, I just didn't know whether we decided specific, intentionally to do it on Tuesday or not.
The fifteenth is a holiday.
Oh. I could have figured that out.
But we, if we need to move it, we could do that.
So do we have a specific agenda or we're just?
No, this would just be a continual, in a placeholder, so we can continue to talk through that over the next week or so.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get a word out by the end of, well, the first part of next week, whether we'll do that or not. Okay, that's all I had. So the consent agenda is the next, it's the standard agenda or topics. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you, Jerry, thank you, Dawn, for seconding. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please raise your right hand. And that motion passes unanimously, and that brings us to our business agenda.
So our la- last item is, we actually, and I'm going to probably turn it over here to Cease a little bit, to her and I will sort of go back and forth. We, as she shared earlier, we have been working with, again, I'm going to call it Fuel Ed K twelve, which is now Stride, because that's what's going to be on the contract. That we have been negotiating with them for an addendum because of just some of the issues we had with the integration as we move forward. So we have negotiated a new contract. It actually reflects the licensing and materials being used for this year. And then again, it ma- maintains a commitment to the platform for up to, or that we have that flexibility up to subsequent, the next two years. This, again, it's been very clearly articulated to me from families that this needs to be a platform that we have and continue with, the virtual type of platform. I want to also be clear that we know that this has not been a smooth transition. We know that this learning platform and most learning platforms have made huge shifts to this environment. But they have been great partners, the fact that I haven't paid anything yet, and it's February, that we continue to have voice in some of the things that they're working through from a curriculum end and from even their platforms. So again, that would be part of that, that we would have that commitment really to potentially go with them for the next two years. There's always out clauses in these contracts, but again, that would be part of what we are looking at. So attached is the amendment, and then Cease, if, if you want to talk through a little bit of just the difference in the finance, once I, once I talk through this part. You know, again, it's adjusted tentative budget for the product. We originally had spent, had been planning to spend out of the various general fund contingencies. And then obviously, line items surplus it on this contract. So we have a bulk of this purchase from the grant funds, again, as we shared previously, S R. And it's G E E R, which is another one of our federal CARES Act's money that came from the state. So those are some of the funding where we will do that with one line of, with one line affected in the general fund. So that leaves us about a hundred and fifty in federal funding to do intensive, again, intervention or summer program as we see necessary. So Cease, anything you would like to add before we sort of move towards action and then opened up to questions?
Yeah, no, I would just entertain questions. If there are any, the spreadsheet, it may be a little confusing, sort of what we originally budgeted and planned. Then the second one shows that proposed adjustment. And what we would, the difference, the seven hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred and fifty would be over the next two years. So that would allow us to get additional seat licenses up two years from now at the current pricing. So that would be guaranteed pricing to be able to use the balance of this contract.
The contract stays at one point four, we're just going to do seven hundred now and seven hundred later?
Seven hun- up to seven hundred over the next two years, right? Plus, and please note, part of this year's seven hundred thousand includes materials. And those would be on top of that in the future, that. That, that 700 for the future would be primarily seat licenses. Potentially we can get it to also cover materials. But materials, training, things like that would still be additional to this because they're as, on an as used basis.
It's all assumed.
So this is, this, this is all for the, oh, it's called Stride now?
Correct.
Right.
So it's the online learning platform that we've been using, really at the K-5. At K-5 and then at, there, we have several classes at the high school that are using it.
Oh, they are, we are using it though.
Correct. Not every, not everyone. And again, there are, we, we believe that there's going to be some changes and we'll continue to work with staff. We're at some point going to pull in a small group of teacher leaders at all levels to talk with them and continue to have those conversations. They have been very thankful that we've been brutally honest with them. As hard as it sometimes is to hear, but you know, are helping them to build a better product as, as they move forward. And as we move forward, because we know that this is going to be part of our life.
Worried that, you know, that they're changing their name because maybe they didn't want to be associated with, with that more, you know, like.
So it was a merger. So Stride is, so Stride is a assessment company. They, they actually have really good assessments. That's been part of our conversations as well as we talk about, you know, potentially other types of summative and assessments that we may have. So they have some really good gap analysis types of things that, that some of our elementaries have done this, this fall just to get a dip of, you know, really where are we? We do have staff. I mean, again, I remember walking buildings before we shut down where staff were like, wow, kids are learning. Like we're seeing the growth. But like I said, it's, it's in small bits that we have that data.
Yeah, if, if it's a merger, then it's great, you know? I, I've seen companies that just want to run away from the name that they used to have because they don't want to be associated with anymore. But if it's a merger, then that makes complete sense.
I have a few questions with regard to Fuel K-12. And some of them I think might be finance and some of them might be other places. So if we're thinking of those two $700,000 payments, we are then in fact eventually getting to the 1.4 million. Is that correct?
We would, but that would be over a three-year period potentially rather than current, this current.
Current year. Okay. And then, well, one comment that I am, I guess question I have also is that, I am tutoring actually 10 students in our districts, grades K through nine. And it is extremely difficult for me to walk in and see K-12 materials piled up in people's corners of boxes they've never touched, materials they've never opened. Teachers haven't gotten to that yet. And I'm, I mean, every time, I'm talking ceiling high. If they've got multiple kids in buildings and, and that is a concern to me because we're not using it. Or we're not using it yet. And it's such a great expense that, that it just concerns me. Because when I go into those homes and it's, to be honest with you, I've seen it kicked around the floor. I've seen it in the bottom of cupboards. I've seen it in boxes unopened. That it's a huge concern for me, for our district, when, and that's happening. It is just a waste of materials and money if we're just leaving it sitting in corners that parents and teachers and, you know, it's not being used. And are we just leaving it in boxes? Can we?
I think there are a couple of things here we should separate. You know, one is we committed to this platform at the beginning of the school year. We have not paid anything because of the implementation issues at the high school. So we've been negotiating. And this, this topic for the board is to approve the, the amendment and adjustment in the overall contract price. Your point, Darcy, is a good one about do we really understand how effective the tool is? And how do we know? It's kind of going back to what Jan was asking about, you know, what is the data? Can we measure how effective we've adopted and families are using, our students are using the tool? I think that's a fair question, but probably separate from what we're trying to decide tonight. But I think it's, I mean, I think it is an interesting question.
Well, it would help me, you know, I, I'm not sure I want to move forward, jump into money when I, I can't figure out this other part.
Do we?
And again, I, that has not been shared from the principals to me that they are not using materials. So again, I will follow up tomorrow, Darcy, with the principal, with the elementary principals.
And I've, I've been communicating and kind of, I've talked to Jennifer, I've been calling in the last three weeks, teachers, parents, just community members, legacy families. I've talked to a few principals just to get their feelings on things. And with parents and community members, I have heard across the board, even our own teachers, say that my kids' materials are still in boxers, boxes. And it's, it's very alarming to me.
And, and I'll point out, I, and again, I have no idea if it was, you know, how they're being used.
Yeah, yeah.
I would just like to point out the, the materials, the, the line item number is, is pretty significant. A hundred dollars per class that, that we teach. But we are still way under in supplies and materials for budget here. Think about the kinds of supplies and materials we usually have for students, including textbooks, curriculum, things like that. It seems like a large line item and it's probably not as overwhelming as we think. But that doesn't mean we should pay for stuff that teachers either weren't trained how to use in conjunction with their teaching, or aren't, they don't see as relevant. And that's certainly something we need.
I don't know what's happening. I just see it.
A lot either. Clearly, as non educators, like, we don't know. But I'm just saying that those costs are offset in other places right now. So.
Okay, thanks, Cece.
I, I would also say, Darcy, I think the important part, when you are, when we, when you adopt curriculum and then implement curriculum, that tends to be really, in my opinion, a two-year process. Because there's a lot you're learning in your first year. Again, there's, and we did this so fast. Normally a curriculum adoption is spending a year. You have some teachers do some piloting. You then go into the curriculum with the rest of it and then you're really flowing as you go into that second year. And Jan, correct me if I'm wrong or you feel different, but it really is a two-year cycle process to really get, you know, through and that curriculum. Again, that's my opinion of what I have seen in many different school districts. But again, I think that we are, we, as in our staff are, have been doing, you know, different things. We know, and we also know, I want to be clear, we knew that there were some supply issues. We have, we had to communicate that out early because we knew that we were getting some English language arts before math. Again, because they were having to do so much from a nationwide, because they're not just helping central. They're helping many school districts that they were running into just supply issues as well. And so we know that some of that was also part of the issue we were working through with them as we were doing that.
Well, in the, the textbook world, when a curriculum is adopted, generally the textbooks are used that very first year. But the supplemental materials that teachers might have, you're right, Jennifer. They might take a year for some of those materials. But I have never seen textbooks that are new and recently adopted piled into a corner.
Okay.
You know, maybe we can, can talk to teachers and find out.
How about this? I will, I, we meet with principals tomorrow. I will get a report from the three elementary principals and then I will put that information into our Friday report to help with that.
So Darcy, I just had a question. So like all 10 of the ones that you're tutoring are like that or just a few of them?
No, not all of the students I'm tutoring are in elementary school, but seven of them are. And they, I have all their, I have box, there are boxes of materials in every one of those houses that are either unopened, the examples I gave, on the floor, shoved in cupboards. And I tutor them. So I sit with them through their K-12. I, I assist with reading after the fact, math after the fact. And in those chunks of times, I've never even had a parent ask me to even look at them. Like I ask, or what is all those boxes in the books? And, and they've said to me the times that I've asked that it's, oh, that's K-12. We just don't even use that. It's like, nobody's ever talked to us about them. They just showed up on my porch one day. And that's, that's disheartening for me.
It could just be that it's new. And like you said, Jen, you know, talking to the principals and, and, and asking them if they have heard any, anything like that from, from their own teachers. I mean, that would be.
Yeah. And again, I, I will, I have not heard that from principals. I, I want to be clear that, you know, as we are going through and, and looking at essential standards. And again, I want to, the essential standards and curriculum are two different things. They are combined together, but at times when you identify, these are the key standards we're going to focus on, then you use that curriculum to help guide the instruction. So there are times that, you know, Jan said the word supplemental curriculum. There are times that we have adopted curriculum, but there, and you guys will hear me say this. There is no curriculum that, that hits every standard that we have or that we are responsible for. And so educators are working with essential standards, looking at the curriculum, pulling the best lessons to support the learning because they're going to meet students where they're at and they're going to use the lessons that are going to be most successful with those students. So even when we have like an English language arts curriculum, not every teacher uses every single material in that book. That they are professionals and that they are using that book as a guide. They're using the essential standards. They're pulling potentially supplemental materials to talk and, and teach students in real world. So it's sort of a combination of all of that. But again, we'll, I'll follow up with that. I have heard more that we didn't have enough supplies. That has been the communication that's come to me is that everyone has not, had not received their materials. This, I had not heard that we had boxes upon boxes sitting everywhere. That has not been conveyed to me at all. So we will, I will follow up with that with our principals.
Really, just go back to what I was trying to say earlier, that, that is an issue with how we've adopted the curriculum or how we've communicated it. That's not a issue with the supplier. This, we committed early on in this school year to adopt K-12 based upon the community committee and the.
And the staff recommendations.
Staff recommendations. So I think we are obligated to, you know, move forward with some financial arrangement with K-12.
Well, and like I said, it could be that, that, you know, we just don't know how to use it yet.
Right. Yeah, I'm ready for a motion.
I move to approve the First Amendment to the 2020 contract with Fuel Ed LLC continuing its term through eight, 2023, and a preliminary budget, budgeted funding as presented.
Thank you, Todd. Is there a second? Thank you, Jerry. There's a second. Any other questions before I call the question? Okay, all in favor of passing the motion, please raise your right hand. All opposed? So Jan, I didn't see.
That's because I'm suffering my conscience right now. I didn't see the email until we got the meeting started. So I haven't read the information. And I've tried to pick up from the conversations what is going to cost us, et cetera. I feel very uninformed, so I'm uncomfortable making a vote. But I don't know if I even have the right to abstain. I, it sounds like it's kind of a done deal. I just, I.
Motion has passed. I think for the record, you would abstain and then Darcy was a nay. So I think it's five to one to one.
So is it okay, is it okay to abstain based on the fact that I didn't read it?
Yeah, you can.
You can abstain for anything you want.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, that completes the business agenda. We are needing to adjourn into executive session.
Short executive session.
And given the time, I think we should go ahead and skip the comments by individual board members unless somebody.
I have one quick comment. All right.
Yep.
On this equity thing.
Our equity district, equity committee?
Yeah, the equity committee or whatever.
Yep.
I would just suggest a four letters, four-word slogan that they might adopt. This part of their thing is do the right thing. Because I read a book about Abraham Lincoln and his evolution of his attitude towards people of color. Evolved from let's ship them all to somewhere else to let's do the right thing and give them equal rights with everybody else. And, and I say that in my extended family, there's at least 13 people of color. And so, but I think that if we keep it simple, do the right thing. Are you treating this person with respect? That's doing the right thing. You see a kid picking on some other kid because of their ethnicity? Are you doing the right thing? That'd be a place to start anyway. Anyway, I talk too much.
No, Jerry, and we, again, I appreciate that. We want to, the definitions, as you said, the training, the definitions are a big part of that. We want to make it clear with what our purpose and objective is. And it truly is, we want to make sure that our students, especially those that have been marginalized or oppressed, you know, have voice and continue to grow and learn. We see in the graduation data as an example, we've seen some areas that have made great growth in our black students. But then we have a flat line in our Latinx students. So again, that's, that's our continued conversation on how we look at and support every single student within Central School District. So we will, we will keep that moving forward.
Yeah, so very, very good thought, Jerry. Thank you.
One last, one last thing I wanted to see if we could add in the future to board meetings is if we could find out ahead of time, for example, a student saying something in a board meeting about how things are going for them, what's working for them, what's not. Maybe a representative from high school or middle school or an ASBEC representative, just to start hearing other voices. I think that, and inviting a parent to speak. I know we have lots of parents who are willing to speak. But in a more positive light as opposed to the heaviness of our meetings, just to hear from other groups in the community, I don't think would hurt. And especially to hear from some of our students. I was unaware that we had picked some, you know, senior, the best musician for the senior class and best, best friends. And I feel like stuff like that, they're seniors and I want to know that as a parent, a community member. And we see people we know around town. So it would be nice to be able to walk by and say, hey, congrats on, you know, that type of thing. So kind of keeping all of the stuff that is going on that's good out in the open and keeping it present, I think would be good for our community.
I think it's a good prompt.
Student board members.
We had student board members and we also had ASBEC.
Yeah, we'll, we'll reach back out.
Yeah, so I, I think it's a good prompt. Thank you, Darcy.
Three people who are willing to talk for the next meeting if you're interested.
Okay, okay. So we are going to adjourn into executive session. So under the provisions of ORS 192.660, open meeting law, the board of directors will enter executive session for the following purpose, to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent. Specific information discussed in the executive session shall not be made public and shall remain disclosed, undisclosed. So we are adjourned from our normal board and we will take just a minute to reconvene in our executive session. Thank you, everybody, for joining tonight.